Go ahead and start with this.
When you get signed in.
Mike doesn't need to get sworn in until our official business. So Andrew is coming running a little late. So we'll go ahead and do our study session and then we'll swear in before the next meeting. And we'll start with the chamber report. Troy.
Hello, Mayor Florrie, City Council members. Thank you for having us tonight. You're getting a double whammy of both Jessica and I. I will be giving you sort of a quick update on the chamber and specifically Oktoberfest. And then Jessica's going to be talking about LAP and the budget request. So get my share screen. Hopefully you can all see this. Lots of changes this year. Overall, we had a great Oktoberfest. From getting, allowing us to have P1 allowed us to put up this clear top tent, which made a great space for both the day and the evening, but allowed us to have that space and expand it a little bit more. Make it a little bit more enjoyable and work better for the festival. We also experimented with having a VIP terrace that was for our sponsors and and for groups that bought the table for the day, and that worked out really well. And we'll be continuing that and expanding on that for next year. More people are learning about the locals hack that if you dress in Trocton and join the festive, you get in for free or and or you get a, if you've already paid, you get a jump queue. So that is getting a little bit stronger. And I think we had probably our strongest festivals since we started doing Oktoberfest ourselves. And then we had some amazing entertainers. Manuela Horn was back for some of the weekends. We had the, the, I can't say their name. I'm not even going to try, but the harmonious group from Austria, who also had a wonderful feature in the Seattle Times that Jessica helped with. And then the return of S-Bon and all their groupies, by the way, they have quite a bit of a following. S-Bon returned to Oktoberfest this year. The shuttle was a hit and worked really well. We had two of those running at all times for a big extended loop, sort of a, an east one and a west one, kind of constantly going in loop. Those worked really well. And the other big hit was the going to having no tickets. That saved on additional lines for people to have to go into. The wristbands worked. There were some glitches here and there, but overall everything worked great. And if the wristband didn't work, people could still use their phone or their card. So it wasn't a problem. This really, really helped. And it also helped with personnel time because we had people up to two to three o'clock in the morning, counting all those tickets at the end of the night. So that is something they no longer have to do, which was really nice. And then we still have areas to expand. We had kind of redid our layout this year. We put all of the food at the back of P1, which were really good. Our huts were great for our retailers, but a fantastic Oktoberfest. And we still have room to add more features and fun things for the kind of plus next year. And careful with this man with the mallet, be warned. He is loose on the streets of Leavenworth. Be warned. No, but thank you, Selby, for pitching in and doing our keg tappings. That was quite a commitment, three weekends, we know. But thank you for doing that and so masterfully. So thanks for that. And now I'm going to jump into some of the numbers and what that looked like. The light blue is 2024 Oktoberfest. And you can see we enjoyed a really robust and good Oktoberfest after having some weekends in the previous month that didn't fare so well. You can see the three weekends of Oktoberfest and the week of an autumn leaf festival, what a, what a bump that is for this quarter of the year. And what that looks like in a year's time is this. We had probably the best Oktoberfest since we've been tracking pedestrian traffic since 2021. And those numbers are higher than some of our Saturday in December numbers. And what a difference. Very interesting to me to think of the traffic flow happening is similar in October as it is in December. But what a difference the is happening on the streets and in the parking lots. But overall, you can see what, what this does for our third quarter. Or sorry, our fourth quarter of the year. I just bumped into someone I knew in Palm Springs who owns a bunch of retail stores in Palm Springs and in San Francisco's Fisherman's Wharf. They're very tourist orientated. Hadn't seen me in years, didn't know where I was. When I told him I was Leavenworth, he said, we have been trying to get into that town for years. Nine seasons? Are you kidding me? Yeah. So that sort of terrified me and I was flattered as well. But moving on these days, Autumn Leaf Festival and the Saturdays of Oktoberfest. If we are looking at, since we've been counting football traffic every day since 2021, this is our KC case of top 40. And these are the first, only, these four days are the only 2024 dates that we can enter into this, into this chart. So amazing. If you look at this chart, it's pretty much all fourth quarter dates. So okay, next slide, I want to talk a little bit about expenses and who gets some of the, the money? The nearly $1 million in expenses that we have, the biggest is entertainment, 17%. For the Leavenworth operations, lodging and personnel are our biggest expenses. And in a kind of a different perspective, if you look at that 12%, this was made up of over 100 locals that we hired. I mean, that 12% is over $100,000. So over 100 locals made over $100,000 this year working at Oktoberfest. Some other things to think about for Oktoberfest is outside vendors. All of our outside vendors that were in there made a combined gross total of $291,000 at Oktoberfest. And five nonprofits raised over $30,000 working as ambassadors. For the chamber, this means that all the things I worked into the budget, like the $50,000 to Upper Valley Bend, I met my goal and was able to actually pay for those things. So we are happy with where we've ended up. And this all also allows us now with some really solid footing to continue our path forward with Destination Smart. And in January, the board will get to decide how we spend some of the the extra budget amounts we have due to Oktoberfest on things like destination development, funding it forward and climate and resiliency. And then overall, calculating this, we make everybody whoops, answer a question when they book their, their tickets. And that is where they are staying. So based on that, all of the people that are buying tickets for Oktoberfest, except for the walk ups, we have that data. And so we were able to calculate that with number of attendees, average length of stay made better by our hotels having two night minimums, averaging the spent on food and beverage and average days spending on retail and other the economic impact of Oktoberfest on these three combined weekends is 15.6 million dollars. And that doesn't include some of the things I just mentioned before. And then I wanted to leave you with, with this quote, which is a very nice comment that was sent to us after the end of Oktoberfest. And with that, I will say pros. I have a minute for questions or we can just go right into Jessica and save all questions to the end if you like.
Year over year, where's the year over year slide? I imagine it's, this is the second real year we've had as the city, right?
Yeah, here's, these are the three years that we've done.
Football, I think 15.1 million, I mean, just, oh, imagine it's better than last year by a lot. Revenue wise for the vendors for the 11% that the city gets, right? Even dollars, football's great. It is great. What are the dollars? Or how do they compare? Do you have an idea in your head? I imagine you do.
Um, what are the dollars? Could you, could you be more specific?
Yeah, the economic impact, what was this last slide? 15.1 million? That's a huge number. That's super great. Last year was at 15 or 14.9. I'm just, it looks, it's just such an outstanding number. It's super great. And it's great to see the charities earn $30,000. Last year they earned $8,000. I mean, it seems like everything is so positive. I'm just curious if you're going to start tracking those. You know, last year was the first year kind of back. This year was amazing. Or does it even matter?
I did, I don't have that number on me. I did do the economic impact for the first time of Oktoberfest last year. And since the numbers increased this year, I just redid it since it would be a higher impact.
Yeah. I love all the graphs. I love seeing graphs. It has huge growth. It's like, I like to see the dollars.
Well, Troy, that was just plain amazing. Just incredible. Nice work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Let's go on to Jessica.
Hey, I'm going to jump in. Can everyone hear me okay? Can everyone see that first slide? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Florrie and members of the council. I think you all know me. I am the Director of Marketing and Public Relations for the Chamber. I also facilitate the LAP Committee. I did provide you with a letter of explanation of our budget request and a copy of that budget for the next two years. And this PowerPoint will kind of go over the highlights from this year and a proposed plan moving forward. There's a lot to cover and I talk a lot, so maybe we'll just hold the questions to the end. I've got like 39 slides. So the, the lap group is responsible for the promotions and marketing for Leavenworth, Lake Wenatchee and the Plain area. Our mission is to maintain Leavenworth's long-term success through promotion and foster our community's vibrancy through tourism. The work we do, however, is not just about trying to get more people to come. A lot of what we do now, of course, is education based. We strive to be very good stewards of our destination and market Leavenworth in order to minimize any negative effects and maximize the benefits of tourism. We are mindful of balancing vibrant economic development with stewardship ethics and visitor education. Our committee makeup remains the same. Moving forward into next year, we have our newest addition is Councilman Travis McMaster, who's been a great addition to the committee. We attended the Community Visioning Workshop during the Sustainable Tourism Conversations. We heard great ideas around the room, some creative brainstorming. In the city recap, the highlights that you present out, these comments stood out for us more than anything. Let me just move this really quick here. How do we communicate to tourists to be better visitors? We need quality over quantity of visitors. We need an education campaign. Let's spread out tourist numbers at locations. I am happy to report that these are things we have been doing, we are doing now, and we will be doing as we move forward. We have shifted from all destination marketing to destination management. We launched our Sustainable Tourism Management Plan last year or this year, which we call Destination Smart, which you know about. I'll talk more about that throughout this presentation. I also do want to thank Selby for presenting information about how and what lodging tax can be used on as mandated by the Department of Revenue. That was, there's a lot of misinformation out there and that was certainly helpful in that forum. Give a second here. So Destination Smart is our, our new Sustainable Tourism Management Framework. It houses some of our current initiatives and provides direction for the LAP Committee and a lens when we look at future considerations. The five pillars we have heard, funding it forward, visitor flow management, communication and monitoring, destination development and climate and resiliency. LAP work mostly falls under communication and monitoring with some support messaging, support for visitor flow management. And specifically, under communication and monitoring, we are using visitor data to make informed decisions with our marketing and events. We're providing education to visitors through our Givenschnitzel campaign. And then we're monitoring visitor impacts, both environmental and, and economic. So before we had access to data sources like we have now, visitor data used to look a little bit like this to us. The left picture is the, the first Saturday of the last Christmas lighting we ever did in 2019. The picture on the right is the first Saturday from this last December. So we knew that high visitation and crowds and traffic issues required big, major changes. And we have made big strides in how we structure our events. We stopped advertising December many years ago. And then we, of course, moved on to a whole, you know, to an all lights always on policy. We have a smaller October footprint, shorter event times and those types of things. Being, having access to data now has changed things considerably for us, of course. And a great example of how our data shapes our marketing decisions is this footfall data from Black Friday to New Year's Eve. This is the visitor volumes you can see from the yellow spikes in December last year. This is 2023 that we saw very big spikes in visitation. We attribute that to the perfect weather conditions over the past and the extra weekend in December. And our drive markets certainly took advantage of that and came over. This data was pivotal, though, in our shift to only sustainable messaging in the drive markets for this year. Leavenworth has very big awareness in the drive markets and we are pretty confident that we can leverage that awareness to educate visitors before they come to town. Here is some of the messaging we use to target those drive markets. These are flighted, meaning we, we schedule these ahead of peak travel times, summer festivals, holidays. Some of that messaging, we just want them to get the most out of their visit and be good visitors. So things like encouraging midweek to avoid high peak times. Park your car and walk from your hotel. Book, book in advance, always checking DOT and pass conditions. Being good stewards of our land and good on the river and observing, you know, fire safety, those types of messaging that we use. We're also collecting user data to help with traffic at the trailhead and rivers. This geo data helps us deliver our sustainable messaging to the right user. If you look at the map there, you'll see we call it a polygon or a point of interest. This particular one is picking up a good area of the river and the enchantments. Despite some cell phone challenges, we are picking up a good sample of those devices to get this visitation information. Geolocation, just so you know, is all opt-in data, meaning that each device user must opt into location sharing on their device in order for us to pick up that data. And everything we have is anonymous and aggregated at the zip code because we want to see where people are coming from. No surprise here, there, our top market, of course, is the Seattle area coming to recreate. And no minor phone data is included in anything we do. So our goals that we set for this year, again, the first goal came from the data from what we saw happening in December of 2023. Switching to only sustainable messaging for all of our markets, except for flight markets. The second goal is not new for us. We have been working to reach these flight markets. We know they're interested in Leavenworth as they show up on our website and social media metrics. This market will stay longer, spend more. They're less impactful than the day tripper. And when we heard the, the comment, quality over quantity, this is why we invest in this particular strategy. It is for our long-term sustainability. And lastly, we do want Leavenworth to be known as a sustainable place to visit, making it synonymous with our brand. Increasing how we get that messaging out was the goal this year, whether through our social media, highlighting sustainable businesses and always pitching sustainable messaging with any of our PR efforts. We did have some additional projects we identified this year, which I'll go through here shortly. Website updates, a new walking map and a new webcam. Our goal is, of course, needing campaigns to deliver the messages. These two campaigns are probably familiar to everybody. We have been using these for the last few years. Both have a level of humor because we think messaging is always much more memorable and impactful with a touch of humor. Holy Schnitzel is our brand primary market for our flight, flight markets, our primary campaign. And of course, the Givenschnitzel is all about sustainability. Here are some examples of some of our Holy Schnitzel targeted ads. The January one, for example, we have all different kinds. These are just a few I'm going to show you. The January ones does, it does encourage January travel on all weekends, not just one. And this is our standard Bavarian. This is our very first ad we ever did. And still, of course, makes an impact. If you were walking in the Phoenix Airport, this is what you would have seen this year. So Kevin still gets text messages like, really, Kevin? So people still are loving this. We did do some digital billboards on the Bay Bridge this year, this early season. That is a huge flight market for us, the Bay Area. I do want to, I, I do want to, there is some rumor going around that we are putting billboards in Germany. And I can assure you, I do all the billboard work. We are not putting billboards in Germany. So this is the only billboard this year. So I don't know where that rumor came from. Some of our Givenschnitzel targeted ads, we have a lot of different ones. This is just to show about being better and more, more responsible on the rivers, really taking care of the trails. This would be a seasonal summer ad. We have them for all seasons, of course. Winter looks a little bit like this. Just to give you a little taste of what we're doing out there. And then we have blog posts for each season that, that's on our landing page, our homepage. Every blog post has helpful hints for that season. And these are some of the friendly tips. We try to encourage people to visit midweek, of course, in the winter. The lights are on through February. There's no reason you need to come in December. You know, have a great time, park correctly, you don't want to get towed. Just things that make their visit better and make it better for everybody. So that is something we do on all of our seasonal blog posts. LAP has, is producing the new downtown map. We used to do the destination, the visitor guide and distribute that. We are now doing the map. It is more to scale. It does mirror the website. It is a better branding piece. So all of our branding pieces have, are cohesive now. And this does help with visitor flow management. That is our distribution piece that is out. So they can have that before they arrive to town. That is our hope. We did install a new webcam downtown overlooking the park that came online this year. People are loving it so they can see what's going on in the park, obviously what's going on downtown. It is a great tool for checking the weather, checking conditions. It also, besides the fact that people who aren't ever going to come here or who may not have been here for years can still feel a part of Leavenworth. All of our webcams do that for people I know. Also, we work really closely with law enforcement, so they serve a security purpose as well. So we, we do have those available. The 2024 highlights, I'm just going to kind of run through these. A lot's happened last year and this year. So I'll just go over these one by one. So website visitation, no surprise again, Seattle is our top market coming to the website. The top user coming to the website, 24, 25 to 44. And females are usually the trip planners, so that is not a surprise to see a greater percentage of women going to our website to get information. Our social media mostly grows organically for Leavenworth. We have amazing content. If you don't follow us, you should. Beautiful videos, beautiful photos, not hard for that to grow on its own. We do see the most growth from our YouTube channel. That would be because of the live webcams. That's where they live. So people tend to follow that and, and share that a lot. Our website is our most important tool. Everything we do comes back to the website. If you are planning or learning about Leavenworth or needing to get information, we want people to find this website. It is ranked number one on all searches. So we put a lot of work into the website and we did the last couple of years. I'll go through some of those improvements, the homepage, new listings, a great new calendar events. We've added regional pages. We want people to travel around the county, not just Leavenworth. Shiloh County has amazing things to see. And we've added a new, I created a new wildfire resource page as a know before you go, really about all the things we need people to know about wildfire season. So this is a little screenshot of the homepage, what it looks like now. At the very top is those resources that I talked about, those, that's where those live. The new destination guide produced by the chamber also lives up there. It is a digital flipbook with active links to all the businesses. That's a little extra bonus for them. You can see that we have a Bavarian Village page and a Plain and Lake Wenatchee page. And right when you come to the homepage, there's your booking engine there. So you can search for lodging and book directly from there. This is what the listings look like now. All the businesses had the opportunity to have new images that we helped them with. Everything looks clean. The listings are expandable. So this is, you know, kind of a new improved look for all the listings on the website. The event calendar, event calendars are, are really the toughest thing we've, we've ever worked on. We're lucky enough to have Shane from Icicle TV, who is a wizard when it comes to things like this. And we're really happy how this turned out. Our members put on amazing events. They have the, the ability to submit their own events now. And if you click on them, you get more information. If you're a user, you can search by the day, by the week or a block of time to pull up events. You can also use the filters if you're really trying to whittle down what you're looking for. If it's just live music, it's just very, very easy for the user on that end. And as I mentioned, we've created some regional travel information. Plain and Lake Wenatchee have their own page now, which is super helpful with maps. And then we also work with partners like the Cascade Loop to try to get information of lesser known areas people might want to visit. And here is that wildfire resource information page. With the know before you go checklist, we have all of the agency's information on there. Give us, give a Schnitzel messaging, the live webcams. Away for you to check the smoke and air quality. And of course, that current status message right there, I would update that. It could say there's smoke in the area, no fire. Or, or, you know, there's fires, you know, stay away, those kind of things. That's where we would update that information. And then overall visitation to town, I always like to show a little bit of information. Clearly, again, no surprise, Seattle Tacoma Bellevue, basically the top. Those are most of our drive markets right there are the ones that are showing up to town. The age demographic hasn't changed in the last four or five years. Actually, it hasn't changed for a long time. Forty-five to 64 has always been the top age demographic since we have been tracking that. What has changed is we're seeing more families. You can see that the household three to five has, is at 47%. So that is, has grown for us. The annual performance, this is the same footfall visitor volume that Troy shares with you throughout the year. This is a four-year look by month. You'll see that spike in December that I showed you earlier that we've been talking about. Interestingly enough, five of the 10 months have lower footfall counts in 2023 than 20, than this year. October, as Troy said, is way up in visitation, of course. What's interesting is this, this slide and the next two kind of mirror each other. So I've got lodging tax on this. This is actual month collected, not the two month delay that the Department of Revenue shares. But you'll see, if you look at the red, which is 2023, and the green this year, that kind of weave in and out, which mirrors what we were seeing in the, in the data for footfall traffic. Again, that giant spike there and then lodging tax, we know when lodging tax is healthy, sales tax tends to be healthy. There you go, as is parking revenue. This, the book direct, which is that portal that you see on the website, on the homepage and on the lodging page and several other pages. This is what we consider a conversion for us. When we have an ad out, we direct it to, when they've made it to the book direct and, and are searching for lodging, we consider that a return on investment for us. Although we reduce the budget, since we aren't doing the drive market the same way this year by 50%, we only saw a slight decrease in book direct searches this year. Nothing that's alarming to us. We do expect to see some ebbs and flows for lots of reasons. This year, you know, was an election year. People are traveling a little bit differently post pandemic. It's just something we'll watch, but it is slightly down so far the year to date. This slide should look familiar to you because it is almost identical to the 2024 goals and initiatives that I already reviewed. With the exception of eliminating Anchorage as one of our flight markets, they had showed up on some analytics we looked at last year during our retreat. We thought we would see if that was a flight market that was worth or, or valuable enough to spend money. We don't think it is, so we removed that. Otherwise, everything else. Otherwise, everything else we plan on, um, continuing with this year. Uh, there will be some new projects that I'll talk about next. Um, we have a, a potential for a new webcam. A three-sixty virtual reality interactive mapping program. We're really excited about. Um, some of the things we talked about our retreat, a possible podcast, maybe some news, real-time news segments. Um, I believe, uh, Travis McMaster brought up some possibility of some ambassador work. We just, some, some of these things we'll continue to talk about at our December meeting, but these are the, some of the projects that we've identified for twenty-twenty-five. So Leavenworth three-sixty, which is our newest project, we've been working on it this year. The lion's share will be, um, completed next year with an early spring launch is what we're hoping for. It is an interactive trip planning, virtual reality, uh, mapping program. It has a ton of potential for growth. I, I can't, I wish I could show you it actually in movement, but we will be able to do that pretty soon. It's got great new tech top, technology that hasn't been available to us before. It's really a tour guide of town. It can provide historical information, seasonal events. Excuse me, it can provide overlays. We've got some parking. I mean, it's not as glamorous, but we are going to have parking and restroom information on there. Travel and weather advisories, um, videos. The, the sky is really the limit. It's also very mobile friendly. Um, it's a trip planning tour tool and it will also help with, um, visitor flow, traffic. Um, I always like to include a slide on some of our notable PR coverage for the year. These are some, this is some great stuff that we're seeing. I do want to reiterate that this is free earned media coverage. This is not something that we solicit. This is not something that I've pitched for. Um, part of the work that I do is providing up-to-date information to journalists and writers, um, fact-checking, fixing incorrect errors, providing up-to-date photos. They can see what Leavenworth looks like now. Um, I did chase down a lot of, of a lot of, uh, stories about when we, when we stopped doing the countdown at Christmas lighting. There was a lot of, a lot of writers that I would chase down to try to get them the new information. Same thing with Oktoberfest, you know, yes, there's an Oktoberfest. This is what it looks like now. Um, that's, um, part of the work that I do, uh, for the chamber. This slide, I always put a slide in, um, that's talks a little bit about the history. I do have a long history with LAP. This is my twenty-fourth year on that committee in some former fashion. I have been record-keeping for all of those years. This is a twelve-year look at lodging tax collections versus, versus the LAP budget. Um, while our annual budget has increased sixty-five percent in twelve years, the fund, of course, has increased. We know the fund is healthy at two-hundred-and-ninety-eight percent. Um, this is the, this is what you were provided for in your packet. This is a look at our budget request. It does give you a good look at, um, some of the marketing, how some of our marketing buys have shifted. We are, um, not utilizing as much of traditional, um, advertising as we have in the past. We do some printed guides. Uh, we stopped doing newspaper years ago, um, but the budget will skew more heavily on the digital side. We do that, of course, because digital is got, has a lot better trackability for us. We're able to do much, um, quicker adjustments when needed. And of course, we can track the return on investment, uh, through digital advertising. And that leads me to my final slide, which is our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget request. We are asking for a three percent inflation increase, um, year over year. Um, advertising costs have risen, of course, from inflation, um, talking to our media partners. Um, they're seeing three to six percent. We think three percent is a reasonable amount year over year. Allows us to continue on with our sustainable messaging efforts. Um, and we are looking at possibly a new webcam on the west side of town that will be able to capture traffic coming in through the roundabout. Um, a different view for a webcam, also super beneficial to the DOT. And really for anything, these webcams are amazing. So we think we'll be able to pull that off next year. Again, finishing that three-sixty interactive mapping tool. Um, possibly a podcast channel. We'll talk more about that at our December meeting. Um, and then we're going to continue with, um, some of those high-value flight markets. And of course, for us, we never stop, um, trying to keep our assets fresh and, um, and available to us throughout the year. And that's what I have. Yeah.
Great questions.
I hope I didn't go too fast. I feel like I talked so much.
I, I have a quick question. Uh, it looks like on all your charts on your drive markets, it doesn't show British Columbia, but based on license plates I see around here, I feel like they've got to be on that list. Do you track?
Yeah, we are. There's something about Canada. Remember, we talked about that at our retreat. Is this Travis was talking? I can't hardly see you. There you are.
Oh, Mike.
Oh, hi, Mike. Yeah, I think it has to do with us being able to not, we can't track things coming from Canada the same way. I think that we had asked about our, yeah, that's why. Um, you will see Vancouver, Washington as one of our drive markets on there, but yes, you're out. We know they're coming from Canada. We just don't know exactly what that looks like.
I had another question. Sorry, new guy here.
That's right.
You mentioned that the flight markets are a lower impact on the town. And that's one reason why you're focusing. But how, how are those guests lower impact than people who drive here?
Anyone that, that stays longer and, and not is not, not driving in and the volume in and out, we consider a lower impact. So they stay longer. So we consider that lower impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
I guess, um, let's put an amazing report, uh, Jessica.
Yeah, sorry. I know it's a lot.
No, I mean, it's well done. Yeah, I mean, it's really. Do you guys ever? I remember well, the impact on the town last December when we had the great weather. Things are really packed out. It's hard to get around. So, um, in that light, I'm asking, do you ever have, you know, maybe you don't know this. I, I get it if you don't. Ever, ever have a sense of where enough is enough? We've got enough tourists. We don't need to keep pushing to get more. We've got, I don't know what that would be. Let me just say it's, I'll just say it's three million a year. So that, I could not be accurate, but I just want a number. So when we get that consistently, are we going to try and, you know, is the idea, I know you guys are, are, um, want to provide a great creative experience for folks to come here. So they come back. We have a sense of when we've meet, met that and that's enough. We don't want to, you know, not that you, you still have work to do, but you know, change anything. Did we just keep pushing to get like four million or six million? That's, that's kind of my gist there.
Right.
And Mike, I'll take that, Jessica. And I think, I think, I think to understand too is that we don't keep pushing. We have pulled back and, and we have evidence of that. Um, you know, when Christmas got out of control, we stopped doing the lighting countdown. And you saw the side-by-side picture of what four-forty-five looks like on a Saturday then versus four-forty-five at a Saturday now. It's, it's going to be an ebb and flow on all things and finding that Goldilocks zone is going to be a case-by-case basis. You can't look at the whole year and say, we're just going to cut back and, you know, you have to look at case by case. Oktoberfest, the city was unhappy with how it had gotten out of control. Changes were made. Lots of other things happen. The chamber's doing it and we're honoring what the city wanted and it's working. So I think looking at case-by-case basis of events, of marketing, of pulling back on advertising the drive market to the Seattle area, because there's enough earned income media out there. Um, and messaging more about, check the webcams before you go. Check what the conditions are going to be like is the message we send now. And that's how we work on this constant ebb and flow of this, this industry. Um, and luckily we have the data and things in place that we can track this and can course correct. Um, if we see something or we're hearing feedback about a certain, uh, a certain event or time of year or a specific issue.
All right. All right. Thanks, Troy. That's a good point. And you're even, the dollars that you spend aren't necessarily, some of them are relaxed in the way of, hey, come, come visit Leavenworth, but more spending those messaging dollars on give a schnitzel, right? That's the, it's, care about our community. When you come here, so we're spending those dollars, you guys are spending those dollars on that messaging versus, hey, let's fill out the beds. Right? I mean, it's really kind of a cool, caring message. That's great.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Comment?
Excellent job, you guys. Yeah, good job.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Appreciate, appreciate, appreciate that partnership we opposite. You know, you, you really have worked with the city. Um, on both of, those two major ones that you mentioned, the, the Christmas and the Oktoberfest that have, I think, long been kind of a thorn for a lot of the residents that, you know, and I, I really appreciate your responsiveness to try to, uh, still bring them in, but, uh, in sort of a different manner, um, response, right? And that's been great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. I guess we're done with that. Now we've got to review a rate and fee schedule change.
Who's taking that?
Yeah, we do have a schedule of rating. We do have a.
I don't know. We didn't discuss this tape.
I know I'm not. That's all I know.
It's a group, uh, a group effort. We have a lot of different changes, uh, that we've been going through. I worked with, uh, worked with Shannon on some changes to the parking rates, uh, worked with Sue and Ashley, uh, from local event co on festival rates and Andy's not here, but I know that she worked, um, on some rate changes to the cemetery, for the cemetery. So we'll entertain, entertain any questions you may have. What is in your packet? In mind that this does not show our utility rates. We are still doing that work. I believe we have a correct next meeting, I think we have a presentation.
Missed the meeting.
Right.
I will talk a little bit about the utility rates as far as the budget perspective is concerned when I present tonight. Did anyone have any questions about what's in the home streets at this time?
I have a question about right-of-way permits.
Um, we may, you can ask a question. We may have to defer an answer. Therefore, the work director not here tonight.
That's fine.
Um, I'm nervous. It's thirty-five of the document itself under special use turnips. Those right-of-ways, street and park right-of-way.
It's right after the cemetery stuff, fees and changes for footrest rental, traffic control and work in the right-of-way.
After cemetery, you said?
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, this very stuff finishes up and then it moves into that next section.
So you got the, on page is thirty-five of the edited document. I see two right-of-way permits, a city park right-of-way, skirt footage. Actually, there's several right-of-way permits in there. Is there a particular?
Well, there's just two on this page that I'm looking at. I don't see a page number on it. Page twenty-nine, I think.
Yeah, twenty-nine.
One thirty-five.
I was tooth-balled for right-of-way.
I'm on page.
Gotcha.
How about, how about same question for page twenty-nine and for page thirty-five? Uh, what, what do we regulate as far as what triggers a right-of-way permit? Does it have to be physically doing some sort of construction in the right-of-way or is it broader than that?
It's broader than that. Even if you're constructing the right-of-way with a boom lift to decorate the lights on a building.
Has that always been the case? We require a right-of-way permit for?
As long as I've been here, it has been, um, at least for the, the chamber. Um, I remember being asked to chase them for a right-of-way permit as they were putting up, they were, they were taking up right-of-way, um, with the boom lift while they're decorating trees. And the reason that we do require the right-of-way permit is for, uh, traffic pedestrian safety. So that we know what's going on in the right-of-way and that it's properly protecting people from that activity. So whether that would be coning off the, the boom lift, um, so that people can see that it's there, I mean, they won't run right into it. I will etotally state that what the week before I went on my vacation, I actually was driving eastbound on two and drove underneath the boom. The, for summer, I don't know who it was, but they had the boom. Canoe leavered over the highway and I drove under him. And I'm like, that shouldn't be the case. Right. And I asked, um, staff at the time if they, if there was a right-of-way permit for that. And I was told that's Highway Two, so that permit goes through DOT. Um, so I wasn't told, well, I'm going to add a permit place for that.
I've had a couple of business owners reach out to me in the last couple of weeks, surprised by the need for a right-of-way permit to use a boom lift to put lights on their building that takes only a couple of hours. So I was, I was curious how long we have been doing that because that seems a little extensive on our part.
As, as long as I've been here, I had the question from, uh, a, a business owner who happens to be an elected official. Um, saying that his land ward was told that he had to get a right-of-way permit, um, to redo the roof on the building. And he was questioning whether that, um, was, was correct that he was told to get, to get a right-of-way permit. I said, well, if we're putting a lift in our right-of-way, then yes, you need a right-of-way permit. Now, it's a policy direction for council. The council would like us to waive the fee for right-of-way permits. While, uh, business owners are decorating their building, staff can do that. But I would still require them to, I would still want them to get a permit. We would just waive the fee for them. Just like, um, someone in the audience a couple of minutes ago brought up the idea, uh, or the fact that we would charge someone a right-of-way permit to repair the sidewalk in front of their house, which seems punitive. And I would agree with that. So maybe what we could do is put in some language here where right-of-way permit fees could be waived under certain circumstances.
I would like that. I mean, as a city, we would encourage all the business owners to decorate their buildings for Christmas. We don't require it. But I certainly hope that this doesn't become some sort of barrier of entry and we have black, blacked out buildings in various places downtown when that's really the drop for our festival throughout the wintertime.
Does that fee, I agree. Does that fee twenty dollars or one hundred dollars?
Well, it's currently a hundred dollars.
Okay.
Depending on what you're doing, between a hundred and three hundred.
Yeah, this, in the fee schedule, this would be a hundred dollars. What's that?
I think we're going to need some input from you on this one. Maggie doesn't recall that. And I don't recall, I would see you're talking about hundreds and hundreds of permits for that. And I'm not seeing that. So I'm not quite certain if it's just about putting a lights that that particular business owner maybe is doing something. She's a light.
Well, they all need man lifts for it. And oftentimes they contract with the chamber because the chamber rents the lift for multiple weeks and then they bring it and help put the lights up.
Yeah. And what we could do is, um, have issued the chamber a, an umbrella right-of-way permit. So that any business owner that is renting or borrowing their lift, you would be covered by that right-of-way permit. But we would still want to make sure that whatever is being done is done in a safe manner. So that if they're not.
Right. I under, I understand the safety. I just don't, I don't see the need to charge people for a couple of hours decorating their buildings when, when we really want to encourage it.
Point taken.
That didn't seem familiar to me, that part of it.
Well, there are some business owners that are not a part of the chamber.
That's correct.
Yep. So does that hold for everybody?
No, they would have to get a right-of-way permit because they would not be under the, uh, the chamber's umbrella. It's just an idea. But the way I would implement it is if you're not a chamber member and you're not borrowing their boom lift, then you don't have a permit. So you'd have to get your own.
Right.
But if council wishes, we can write in a way to waive these fees.
It might mean a separate permit, but it doesn't necessarily mean a separate fee anyways.
It's really important, I think. Any other questions about the changes you see in the rate piece guide?
Can you go into a little bit of the discussion that you had with the festival manager and the kind of the logic in the negotiations for raising uh a lot of the fees for the festival?
I would, but my memory is a little foggy on that one. And the changes that you see are not for twenty-five because a lot of twenty-five plans have already been built. So this is for until twenty-six.
A question on this cemetery rates and fees. I'm not spotting where it is right now, but I think somewhere it said that if you if someone's buried in a plot and you have one cremation that you can put under there to that there was a charge for that cremation. Am I remembering that? I kept spot where it is. And I just wondered if if you make a change here, but somebody has already bought something before the change. Do they stay where they are or do they have to do the change?
So if the plot's been purchased, the plot has been purchased. If we change the fee for burials, then yes, they would be subject to the new fee for burials. If you buy your plot thirty years ago, that doesn't grandfather you into a burial fee from thirty years ago.
That makes sense. It's based on current charges.
So what you're saying, if you bought it thirty years ago, it doesn't grandfather you in?
The burial fee. You you purchase a plot of land. That's all that comes with it is plot of land. It doesn't come with any kind of service.
Burial fees are gonna be.
Burial fees will be imposed at time that the person is entered.
For the parking fee modifications, the overnight rates that have been added.
Yes.
Uh, Shannon, can you remind me um in these two specific lots why we're adding some overnight fees?
Yes, um, we are looking to add overnight park to our lot. Um, the one we took ready to go for now because it is a lot that we can throw this, you know, the goal so I can utilize it. All you want. The other one will come online in April after this, you know, regulations with because that's when uh we don't prefer much snow. So I have still set aside in both of those lots uh for over four thousand hotels. For someone to look like in the right style. And what is something that we have discussed in our community about being able to offer this to our hotels? We have, yes, that's on the, on our spread, you know, this. That maybe have something that they will um have in the winter.
Where is the horse to lake part of the lot?
The horse to lake part in line is at the end of ten east. It is the lot that we are managing and commission with Tomlin.
Thanks.
Which one is the one that's gonna be uh available in the winter?
Oh, she go.
It isn't.
What? I can't hear.
It's the new lot.
The new lot is the very bakery is called Crossy Hills.
The Tomlin one. Okay. And then you said there were two.
There were two lots. Cold chip lot was always going without code for overnight parking. It was something that was was in their way before me and I chose to utilize it because it was something that we get requests for like crazy for overnight parking for people that have come with too many vehicles and they show up with a a watching and all the lessons have one.
Is that the DOT lot?
No, it's the one behind the festival.
Oh, behind.
Parking at the DOT.
I learned the numbers.
Never allowed on.
I remember the names. What name goes with what that murder?
But to be clear, these aren't, you can't camp there.
No, you cannot.
It seems like the name seems like, oh, wait.
Right. Yeah, you cannot.
Overnight is hard. Yeah, cannot say.
Yeah, correct, yeah. Which is why we are no longer allowing part overnight parking at Glacier.
Yeah.
Because it was used as a campground.
Sounds good.
Did I see there's an exception for emergency closure of Stevens Pass? There's going to be some allowance for that. Is that correct? There are how many over oversized stalls for seminars? About six or eight? Um, I've only been here for a couple of years when I have seen Tom Water Canyon closed due to snow and avalanche. Um, I haven't seen them utilizing our glacier our glacier parking lot. I I see them queuing up on the shoulder.
Yeah, and staying in the.
West westbound on highway two. Shannon, is there max for the overnight rate for overnight parking?
You need the maximum stalls.
No, no, like amount of time they can be in overnight.
Well, no, they can stay there for the one day. Stay. It's kind of like a.
So twenty-four, twenty-four, yeah, twenty-four.
It's overnight. If you're coming at four or five that night, that we don't tell. It's we they call they make the reservations prepaid um with the, you know, to keep it barrier spread.
Thank you, Shannon.
Shannon, thanks, Shannon, for all your work.
So Sal, we we can't really get a clarification on the rate increase on the festival at this time.
I just, I'm drawing a blank on our conversation. I really am. I'm I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
I wish I had Sue here as my my fellow friend.
Well, my question has to do with why we're increasing uh nonprofits. Um, and we've got, is this company, are we comparing, it's a comparison down valley to other community centers and why would we? Why would you?
So from a budget perspective.
Oh, we did have these conversations.
And I will talk a little bit uh when I do the budget presentation later as well about where the festival fund is. And it is slowly progressing back. We still have not achieved our financial policy goal of the fifty percent mark of operations and maintenance for a year. And our costs are continuing to go up. So the reality is if we want to keep that gap from growing, we need to raise rates to offset.
Hmm.
And I I wasn't involved in the individual pieces other than they sent me an email and said propose this rate or that rate. And my thought was we should probably just be consistent if we're gonna raise a certain rate, five percent or ten percent or whatever, that we should do the same. Now, I haven't, sorry, I've been out of town. Um, I didn't get to look at the overall final. And I do see that there are some five percents and some fifteen percents. Um, I do know that I I was thinking what we did and so when you correct me if I'm wrong here. They were trying to hold the rates lower with nonprofits.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not reading where it's.
So some houses paid at the very back. Very back of the packet materials for this. Oh, that I think that's it with the yellow highlight.
Yeah, I'm on there, but I'm not saying nonprofit.
So private rental, private rental.
Oh, there we go. There we go. I did scroll down far enough. So we increased the nonprofit rate by only five percent. That's right.
Okay. Does that help answer a little more questions with the festival? We can definitely uh have Ashley come to a future meeting to to go over this more.
Okay. Oh, like, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I do recall a meeting where I was there, you were there, Sue was there, Ashley was there and the conversation revolved around the need to raise rates so that the fund balance can stay healthy.
Sure.
And and Ashley did note that we're still considerably cheaper than competitors. Okay. Um, sleeping lady, of course, is the upper echelon.
Right.
Um, cashmere has their facility, which we were lower than theirs. And when actually had some facilities that aren't as popular as ours, people want to be in this part of the valley.
Yeah, that's all great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'd appreciate if she could come.
Yeah.
Kind of review some of the review that if that'd be possible.
If you think of anything specific that you want to ask and send us uh those questions, we can make sure that we get those answered on the fly and she's not.
Yeah.
Guard.
Yeah.
The first section of rates for profit and nonprofit events. Those are rates specific to public events, right? Something something that's open to the public, not a private event.
No, I'm reading. And I apologize because I'm looking at this the first time as well. I was gone while the packet was being put together. Um, I'm seeing the top of the page being private events that are not open to the public. And those going up by fifteen percent.
The daily rates for event and for profit event and nonprofit event?
Those are open to the public or they could be either or, public or private.
So how does that differentiate from a private event?
There is well, well, it would be upon the person who's renting it can choose whether or not they're inviting the public um to the event. The top one with the fifteen percent increase was for the full packages. So it's not just the rental, but it's for everything. The tables, chairs, the event staffing, etc., which is what they do try to sell, especially for the concierge and weddings.
So are the are the daily rental rates for profit and nonprofit? Is that with all of the other rental pieces backed out and that's just the rental of the festival?
That's my understanding.
And then the private event one is all inclusive and it includes all that stuff.
Yes. That's my understanding.
I feel like this chart could be a little more streamlined for better understanding.
Before we bring this to you guys for adoption, we'll sort of have Ashley.
Looking at the red lines, no help.
Yeah.
Get here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you see this rate increase, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six, this like June or.
These will go into effect for January twenty-sixth.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, okay.
Everything, what we what we would like you to do after we do our utility rate presentation is we'd like you to adopt new rates for twenty-five um in time for us to implement them in January. These festival rates aren't as critical because they wouldn't go into effect through twenty until twenty-sixth.
And the festival though gets booked a year in advance. That's why we're always an extra year ahead.
That's what I guess it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we we realized it was too late to book any change rates for twenty-five because twenty-five is already fairly booked out.
Yeah, okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
Questions? All right, let's move on into our discussion. Great, great. You know, I'm like, did you read the blowing uh beef-based community events?
There's a question. Was Liz Ryan invited to this meeting to talk about this?
Liz. This came from Liz Ryan.
Was she told that we were having this?
That's a great question.
I don't I'm not seeing her.
No, neither am I. I don't think Liz was communicated to. Um, this was a request from her. Um, her email to uh more than just to me, but to a group of people was cut and pasted into the write-up.
Yep.
Uh, we could still have a conversation with her. Um, when I was reviewing the packet today um and reviewing the park code, I see a need to make changes to our car code anyway. Um, what we what I've been told has always been the way we do things is uh although under definitions, it says that all city parks are 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 um are included in these uh regulations. There's many more restrictions and uh around front street, use of front street. And what I've been told is that we apply the front street code to all of our parks. Which doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. Why would we require Bavarian commercial activities in Enchantment Park?
Right.
That doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Um, what Liz was looking for, and again, this is apparently she had previously taught classes um on parks. Then there was a change in staff and she was told she could only do that. So this is all predates um my involvement with Leavenworth. And uh I understand that she was at one point doing donation-based group exercise at the Osborne property, but it was donation-based. I'm not sure if she got a park use um permit for that or not, but like we did tell her that she couldn't charge a fee for it. So that's the genesis of this is she would like to be able to hold classes and charge for them. Or donation based? Or donation.
I think this is, I've seen this play out before. It's such a great thing for people to do these boot camps and these things in the park. They build a little following, then they rent a little space and they they're building like a business in a community if in a positive way. I think these are, I think this is great. I think we should. It makes sense to break it out. They don't need to be Bavarian themed doing yoga in the park.
No, I definitely think the park regulations need some, some changes.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Yeah, I've done yoga down at the gazebo.
What's that?
I've done yoga down at the gazebo.
Were you in your player hose or?
Yeah, we're not changing that. You'd have to be.
I would not.
In the gazebo, you can die.
That'd be really hard.
Well, Liz was doing, I mean, she had a lot of seniors that she would do these yoga classes and and before before we knocked down the pavilion next door.
Is.
Done there.
Okay.
Um, and then she was looking and she did it even in the winter. So she wanted a cover. So that's when we allowed her to do it.
And we were.
Moss born cover.
Okay. And we were certainly allowing commerce to take place in Lions, in Lions Club Park as part of the farmer's market, right?
Right.
I mean, the city didn't get anything from that. So we got a hundred ten dollar event permit fee um from the organizers and.
Farmers market has a special RCW for their allowance.
Right.
And that's why farmers was allowed. And then Lions.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think they charge a fee for their breakfast.
They definitely charge. Yeah, it's ten bucks. Oh, you can eat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, there's it's not clearly and uniformly enforced, right?
Yeah, it well, you know, past councils have to turn away from commercial use of Lions enchantment waterfront other than rafting and tubing because it can become an onslaught. You've got everybody that wants their piece of it. They want to spend for their event, this event, that event. It could be a lot of requests. Um, when you where's your breaking point? How do you write your code to say, okay, we've had enough? Is there a a number of permits? Is it a certain time of year? So then you start getting competition because people realize, oh, well, I gotta beat that person if I want it for that month or that week or whatever their their thing is that that they're trying to do. So the councils in the past have just steered a little bit away from charging for the parks in that essence from a commercial standpoint.
Have we seen that problem before? The competition to use our parks?
I don't think so because.
So it was just an assumption made up by previous councils.
Yeah. I think it's worth exploring.
Yeah.
But you need to think about those criteria.
So would it make more sense to kind of have staff go through our park regulations to make some staff seen at its. To make some staff scene edits first and then maybe reach out to Liz and work with her on something that might. Get get her feedback on something that might work to adapt that in, not just for her specific use, but for. Various other community member opportunities for activities and classes that are education based for our community.
Be I'd be more than happy to work with staff on on updating our our park regulations for sure. I think it's something that needs to happen. I will say that my uh previous employer where I ran uh within my umbrella was uh Parks and Recreation Department. We had. Three full time recreation staff. Um, people would approach us, wanted to do yoga in the park. And the way we would do it is we we had uh twice a year, we put together very thick, robust uh activities died. So it was. Here's our, here's our rec offerings for next six months. And we would get a cut. So that was, we wouldn't charge them to use our park. We would put them into our advertisements. If the program flew, the program flew, and then we would get twenty, twenty five percent of whatever the tip was. And that was the way that that money then went to the federal fund to offset the the operations of the recreation park. So. What you would probably see from me is a recommendation to charge for this if they're charging for it.
And then take a percentage.
Something like.
Yeah, yeah.
And the percentage, the percentage based thing is harder to track and harder to keep people honest. But it's also less of a risk for the person, so they don't have to outline, you know, and don't have to pay out money to get a permit to hold an event that may or may not succeed.
Okay. Is there a defined, I think it's, I think we've had this language this past year about expanding or looking, taking a harder look at our. Parks and Rec, what that means, right? Look at the pool and the Parks and Rec. You look at, somebody had mentioned a path on the golf course, the sea, you know, is that a Parks and Rec? What is our Parks and Rec area? It's the kind of the city or their. Different pockets, the tennis courts at the Osborne, someone was put on tennis tournament or pickleball tournament, is that a Parks and Recs? Right, okay, so it seems like, looks like Parks and Rec is like.
The other half is ours.
Okay, so that's part of the Parks and Rec.
We don't have.
We do not.
P R S A, the pool.
Yeah, right.
Recreation. Other cities and.
The ci- the city of Leavenworth is other than the P R S A and support for pool does not take on recreation.
Yeah.
We make it our parks.
Is there such a thing since the Lions Club has been there a hundred years that you go and father and go and father something in?
I'm not even sure how it's. Being allowed now.
Yeah. Yeah. There's, as you know, there's a lot of um. I believe they donated a portion of the land, the building. So there's, there's probably some old history there.
I yeah, I know, because when we first came to the Lions Club art where they cooked was out front and then they. Get back, I can't remember when, but several years ago.
I know there was a lot of um concern when we had to tear down the shelter. Since that was something that had been put out and possibly done by Lions Club. Yeah. Yeah.
Who pays out just if not?
We do. We own the land, uh and that's also why the P R S A doesn't get involved because P R S A doesn't own the land. And there's only an agreement between the city and the P R S A for operation of the pool. We've had lots of discussions in P R S A over the many years that I've been here about taking on. The maintenance of the Dragon Park. Is that's within the P R S A boundary. But we just don't have the revenue stream to take on more than what we, the city of Leavenworth already have within our budget and within. The land that we own and manage.
You mean the Beshastan Park?
Mm hmm, yeah, sorry, I said dragon.
So so be what a reworking of the the whole policy, would that kind of encompass all of this stuff? Kind of clarify Lions Club usage allow for other usages that aren't allowed in the code right now?
It could.
As a, as a council, I'm I'm learning as we go here, but are we? I personally feel like we want our community to build these parks, even possibly in some business scenarios if it if it's good for the community. I don't know how to.
I think it can be well defined so that it's, you know, it doesn't get out of hand.
Mm hmm.
Um, it's a way that we can regulate it, but also allow it.
There was some big public pushback with that. Gosh, probably about ten years ago. Uh, segways were brought in and they wanted to rent out segways that people could ride on the paths. And they're it's dangerous because they can go very fast and. They were concerned, the council was concerned about the commercialism and use of it. And so that one, that one sticks out in my mind is probably the most popular one.
Mm hmm.
And a lot of public came out to say no commercial business activity.
Hmm.
So the more you talk about this, the more you might get the input that you're seeking from the public.
Yeah, there are, there are bike tours that go on pathways and.
Yeah.
Uh, how do, how do soccer leagues uh wreck softball leagues that use the ball field, so those. They get a park use request and then they reserve out the days that they want and they don't pay anything for it. And I will say that when I had a recreation department underneath my umbrella, we charged for everything. We charge every sock, youth soccer, adult soccer, youth baseball, adult softball. We charge for every use of our facilities. Because that's how we generated money to take care of them.
I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Same at the school district doing rush country running.
I would be opposed to it.
Would or would not, Sharon?
I would.
Yeah, my son.
I don't know, there's just something. Ugly about. Charging, you know, they're they're all volunteers to work with kids and it keeps the kids busy and they learn. Have learned all kinds of things and then to charge him, I I don't like it.
Well, I know that I got a grandson that plays baseball down in Wenatchee and those teams pay for the use. For the facilities, you know, um.
Because someone's got to maintain them.
Yeah, it's just built in, you know, there's a. Fee for each team.
Yeah, all the leagues pay a fee to be a be a league as well.
Yeah.
I certainly want it to not be prohibited. We want. For some community members who don't play baseball, it's a pretty big expense for us to maintain a baseball diamond. That uh is only used by a pretty small percentage of the public.
Right.
So it seems like we're. We're funding that. So I I'm not, I must be a double advocate, but it seems like, seems like there should be room for discussion on that.
Hmm, I agree.
Yeah. I think it's it's a chance for us to use public, city public works for. Building community. You have these groups come together, you spend some time, you. You know, invariably build relationships. It's just the community using city property in a real positive way. So I think how we can facilitate that is a big plus.
And again, I think, I think the guidelines have to be put in place so you don't, I mean, the idea of this business and things, what you don't want to do is just basically. Enable somebody to not have to have a site, right? I mean, you 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 mentioned, you know, it's kind of. A way to spring into a site, but why if you're basically able to use it for little or no. You know, cost, you build a business that way. Um, then then again, we're subsidizing not just sports, we're subsidizing a business and that's where it gets, to me, it gets tricky. Right? You don't wanna. So there's some legitimate, I mean, I think the yoga idea, I mean, I know Liz, I know what she's about and trying to do and it's. It is a service more than anything, right? Um, but. But it's, it's just difficult to define those in a way that. Doesn't get, doesn't open up to abuse.
What would it look like for the city to have?
No, you don't want to open to it.
We'd have to get rid of the P R S A and then have our own.
Well, the, you know, the the teens and the parents fix up fields and things too.
The goals of the city.
I mean, it's not like they just show up and they're all lined and and raped and everything. The teams, the teams to help clean up the fields and get things done. We picked up rocks on the one when the girls softball played down there for. For months. So you know, you're. It should be a, uh, we do something together maybe thing, so that they can help in lieu of. Trying to charge money.
Well, we'll. We'll uh wrestle with it and come back and.
To wrap this up and sometime in twenty five, not going to promise plan.
Right.
We'll have another study session to talk about.
Right.
Park regulations.
Right, I like the discussion on the Parks and Rec though. We've had that.
Yeah.
Just like, I like that we're continuing to have this discussion of Parks and Rec. I think it's important, other than drinking and.
So one last. One last thing on here is response to the cross located on Tomwater Mountain. We've been asked to consider um. Having uh a discussion about a or a uh resolution that would. Not be in favor of that and giving some reasons. There's a group that's putting together some. Legal reasons for it not being allowed. Um, at this point, we don't have anything except for to say. Is it worth bringing to you for a discussion? So it's, there's nothing to present here, there's nothing to, but. We're looking from for a response from a group that has asked us to consider it. I'm just said, I'll get a temperature feel if you're willing to have that discussion. And then we'll see what they come up with.
I think.
Well, it's, it's a group of folks, but Allison Miller is involved in that. Um, on the planning commission, she mentioned it to me after the last planning commission meeting. Um, but there's a number of people.
I like to get in front of stuff and not necessarily be reactionary, but this is a county. Problem right now on the construction, when it becomes a light problem, a light pollution issue, when we see it, it becomes our problem. Right now, I'm not for this continuous discussion personally, because I think it's, it's a county thing.
So it's.
Agreed.
I think the actions and the inactions of the county will impact us at the community though.
Right.
And I think that that's more of the discussion topic and whether or not we want to further that conversation. Because regardless of what that structure would be, if it's lit up on the hill. It's going to be representative of the city of Leavenworth, whether it's in the city limits or not.
Right.
Any, any big sign up there, people would notice when they come into town and they're going to make certain assumptions about our community.
It's an action against the county and at that point, I believe it's not our.
Well, the, we're part of, we're in the county. We're in the county, so, so. If if it impacts us, and we believe it impacts us, we have a right to to say something. All I'm asking is, if there's a, if there's. Three of you, four of you that are saying, let's have that discussion. We're not deciding anything. You can say, yeah, I'll vote it down, but. You know, the the question is, is it worth having a discussion?
I think it's worth having that discussion.
I think it's welcome to the discussion.
Okay, I think it's uh, I would agree it's worth having. I'd like to have, when we have a discussion. I'd like to have the folks who are part of this process present so we can.
Oh, yeah, no, that's. Definitely. I I told them it's no sense coming now because we don't have anything formal to even discuss.
Right.
Just, this is just about, do we want to discuss it? And yeah, they'll be, they'll be present, there'll be others, it'll be public side, we'll get. Turnouts from both sides, so.
Okay.
That's the way it should be, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Much about, honestly.
Yeah.
I kind of see some Facebook, I'm not big on Facebook, and this is purely coming from a Facebook driven thing, I don't. I guess I don't know nothing about it, just what I've heard, or maybe I've just heard misinformation. I'm I'm fine with learning more about.
Yeah, well, we'll bring it. We'll bring something in the future. That's all we would need to do. Let's take a brief break and. We'll gather to swear somebody in and. Call the meeting of the Leavenworth City Council for November twelfth, the order, stand for pledge of allegiance. Zeke, you want to start us?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the line of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Anne Hesper.
Zeke Reister.
Shane Thayer.
Travis McMaster.
Mike the Darden.
We're all here and welcome to Mike. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a question.
Let let it move it then.
Okay.
Second. And Zeke seconded, okay, and what? Sharon, you got a couple?
Page one, the very first thing, on call photography.
Page one of what?
Plane.
Oh, I'm sorry, it counts payable.
Which is tab what?
On call photography, I believe this is our gentleman at Cara hired to help get good photo.
So now that I'm on the proper tab, what was the question?
Um, what is the on call photography thousand eighty dollars?
That was probably dealing with the.
Ah, that's, that is Jake Martinez. Uh, he was here earlier today to take photos of Mike swearing in ceremony, which got postponed.
Okay.
So he's a freelance photographer that is hired by our communications person, Cara, to take uh photos. He was there taking pictures during Autumn Leaf. Take pictures during COVID best. This particular one might have been an engagement night.
Sorry, no.
The visioning, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, he was there.
From ten twenty three.
Yeah.
Okay, it didn't say what it was.
Yeah, it's photography for us to get um content.
Okay. On page three. I have two questions. The. Highway street, snowflake, street lights, is that a lodging tax? I don't see it under lodging tax. The snowflakes that they put along the highway, I think it is, maybe it's not that.
Streetlights slash highway snowflakes. Um, that one is actually hitting the street fund at this time. We only get the bill once a year for the snowflakes, but that's the name of the account.
Okay.
And that, and the snowflake portion, when it hits, we charge lodging tax.
Okay. Um. The city pool one, just down a little bit further, two thousand nine hundred seventy eight dollars.
Yep.
I selected bill for the pool.
For the season?
Uh, it's, no, that's just one month.
Okay.
That would have been September's bill.
Okay, thank you. And on page four, I've got two questions. Um. The mat, the um. City Hall supplies, W W T P supplies, shop supplies. What were those, just an example of those?
The most of these Sharon, these black mats that are out here.
Okay.
In the walkway, they get replaced on a weekly basis.
Okay. Alrighty, and on page five, the next page, Triangle Park. Evan Street is, what is that, Triangle Park is that little place where there's no house and it's just?
So it is a a park. It it's charged to our Parks Department, but it is like some landscaped grass that has a bill. And it's our city of Leavenworth.
Okay, I just.
So it's probably water.
Okay, so I didn't think anybody took care of the thing, I'm the place I'm thinking of, so maybe I'll John the next time I see.
John would definitely know.
Okay, page six. With another cool thing. Community swirl. Boiler presser, vessel inspection.
Department of Labor and Industries, that's an annual bill.
Okay.
For inspections and each of the city's locations have something associated with it that they inspect.
Okay. And then below that, the Enzian Incorporated. Twelve thousand dollars for snow storage lease payment, so are we putting snow on?
That's where we push the snow.
Oh, over the side.
Night Street.
Okay, and I think I just have two more questions on page eleven. Park Mobile LLC.
Park Mobile.
End user fees. September twenty twenty four.
Where are you? Not see, oh, you're. You're probably jumped to another AP report, not ten twenty three.
Accounts, no, it's just accounts payable, page eleven. Yeah, I did.
Yes, you did. You're on November thirteenth now.
Yes, sorry.
So end user fees, Park Mobiles. Shannon, would you like to explain who Park Mobile is?
Yeah, Park Mobile is our app. Um, our parking app, so that.
Um, our parking app, so that end user is, um. Pay parking. Going through their app.
Okay, and we are paying them.
We pay them.
Okay.
We get their service fee.
Okay. And on the last one, on page thirteen. La Brea garbage truck. Is that just?
Is that SWF equipment?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So that would be repairs to our twenty eleven garbage truck.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
All right, I will. All those in favor of. The consent agenda passing, let me see your hand. As you want to swing. Move on to comments from the public on items not on the agenda, anybody would like. Imagine some of you have agenda items, but. Yeah. Yes, they, you want to come up and give your name and address to me?
Sure, yeah, thanks. Uh, my name is Abdi Elchopi, I live at six two six Cedar Street here in Leavenworth, and, uh. I'm here today, uh, two for two reasons really, one is to just introduce myself. To the council and other members here at the community. And two, to invite you all to an event that we're, uh, having, uh, here in, uh. On November twenty-third, after Sleeping Lady, so. My name is Abdi Elchopi, like I said, uh, some of you may know me as Mr. Elchopi. Uh, I'm a teacher at the Shafton Dryden Elementary School. And, uh, I've actually had an opportunity to work with some of your children, uh, while at the process of. Teaching, I, I was special education teacher and now I work with, uh. Of intervention specia, so I work with students with various. Disabilities and also need, um, uh, learning needs. And, uh. Let's see, uh. During my time at the school district, I've gotten to know many students, including their, some of their families, and I met my beautiful wife, Madeline. Uh, right here in Leavenworth as part of the school district. Uh, some of you also may know me from Ski Hill. Uh, since twenty sixteen, I've helped coordinate the after-school ski club, it's an after-school. Skiing and snowboarding program that's free to all students, third through eighth grade, I, I, I help coach. And it's a specifically designated design for students who, um, who have never skied and snowboarded before, we provide the. The snowboards and the skis, we give them a bus up to the ski hill, it's every Wednesday, um, starting after Christmas break. And, um. So. I wanted to introduce myself to the council members and hopefully start a conversation with you, and. I would love to have an opportunity to speak and meet with you and talk about, uh, some, some. Things that are very important and personal to me, um. But while I'm here, I would also like to take the opportunity to invite you to a, uh. It's called Paula Steam in the Valley, and it's a Palestinian cultural night and benefit event. And it's on November twenty-third, it's out at the Sleeping Lady, we're gonna feature Palestinian food. Music and dance, and we have a dance troupe coming out from Seattle. Uh, it's gonna be a really cool traditional Palestinian dance. And, uh, delicious Palestinian food, we worked with the caterers out at Sleeping Lady. To design a menu that's hopefully gonna be authentic and delicious. And there will also be, uh, a food player, uh, who's gonna come and play some. Traditional Palestinian music, so. Please do join us on November twenty-third, next Saturday, and it is, it's gonna start at four P M. And, uh, we'll also have time for conversation and, and just sort of getting to know people and. Um, I really look forward to getting to know you council members better, I've reached out to some of you, I've had an opportunity. To meet with some of you to talk, and I'd like to just continue this conversation further in the future, so, um. Maybe after the meeting, we could, we could have just a couple minutes to chat and talk a little bit more about, um. About myself, about Palestine, and, uh, and make a connection between Palestine and, and our beautiful community here at Leavenworth. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Okay. Seeing done, we'll go to our first public hearing, this is the property tax at Glorum, and we'll be led by. Chantel.
I'm gonna apologize off the bat, I am not sick. I had flowers delivered to my office today and. They were very robust and beautiful, and I think I'm having a pretty massive allergic reaction. So I've been sniffing and blowing my nose and I'm just, I'm not sick, I promise, so.
That's what they all say.
Apologize. Take my apology, and so I'm gonna give you a claritus, so hopefully that kicks in, because we're gonna be here for a little while. Um, I'll try to wrap it up pretty much, but just so you're aware, the budget, uh, presentations do take about an hour generally. So all the students fast as possible. There's gonna be two that the mayor has opened for us tonight. Uh, the Adlora Public Tax was the presentation at our last meeting, and unfortunately was canceled. So we'll do this one first, it's only a few slides. So where are we at, and what's left? So prelim public budget hearing, that one is scheduled for tonight. Uh, final public budget hearing will be two weeks from now, and then we will adopt our budget in December. If all goes well. What will happen after that in twenty twenty-four? Whatever capital projects did not get completed in this year will roll into twenty twenty-five. And you council will see that as an ordinance budget amendment. So tonight, for your property tax hearing, you have a consideration to increase your property taxes. By one percent, that is not one percent on an individual's property, that is one percent on the amount that you annually have been collecting. So that equates to seven thousand two hundred ninety dollars and ninety-six cents is what we are allowed. Uh, there's more information there that gives you what our levy rate is. Talks about the fact that we're at zero point eight zero, which is well below what we're allowed to be if our property tax value was higher. In total, with the one percent increase, if council, you choose to take that action. After a public hearings, the total collection this year will be seven hundred thirty-six thousand, three eighty-six, seventy-two. That number does not yet include new construction, which you will, uh. Automatically get whether or not you take your one percent. That is three thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents. That is based on four point eight million dollars of new construction that occurred over the past year. We have no annexations this year, so no annexation revenue. And the assessor did let me know that our refund revenue this year. Is one thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. So grand total, if you add in your one percent, you get seven hundred forty-one thousand, eight ninety-nine, forty-seven. So you have two options, option A. Don't take your, your one percent. You'll get seven thirty-four, sixty-one eighty-two. Take your one percent. Seven four one, eight nine nine, forty-seven. What does that buy? What is my property tax paid for? Just to give you an idea of public safety and law in the city of Leavenworth. We have over eight hundred and ninety-two thousand in public safety costs. That does not have anything to do with the operations of the city staff whatsoever. Law enforcement contract. The Rivercom nine-one-one, the prosecution services, emergency management. Jail services and fire marshal services. Overall, the particular public safety costs are contractual, every one of them. And they are increasing by approximately four percent. In this particular, uh, year, this is only on one year, by the way. Compared to our one percent increase. This is just a scenario to let you understand if you choose not to take your one percent. What does that do over time? If you could choose year after year to not take your one percent. What that does is it creates what's called banked capacity. We currently do not have any banked. But what you can see is, this one is for zero, you would get about ninety thousand dollars. Versus a hundred and forty-nine, so almost sixty thousand dollars over a ten-year period is what you would be leaving on the table. If you didn't take your annual one percent increase. People always like to look at this, what do my taxes cost in Leavenworth compared to everyone around me? Here's Leavenworth. Pretty good, is that forty-one eighty-six? Hey, can someone holler at me what that red number is?
Forty-six ninety-three.
Okay, cashmere is the highest. Leavenworth is right smack dab in the middle. That was two years ago. This is all based on, if you look across the top here. Approximately a five hundred thousand dollar home. And notice the county was North Road. So you can compare the county. To the city of Leavenworth. Now let's fast forward to this year. Notice the switch. County Chumstick. Is now the highest. Of any of the communities. Leavenworth still remains around the middle.
She's second, the lowest.
Yeah, from the lowest. Any questions on property tax? This is a public hearing, so public, if you have any questions, please take those.
Yeah. So you had the, uh, the seven thousand, the one percent, is that based on median value, or what is that?
No, property taxes in Washington state are based on a thousand dollars possessed value of your home. So if you have a million dollar home, divide that by one thousand, that is the number of units you have. And then they take that unit and they multiply it by the levy rate, which was point eight.
Okay.
Yeah, now over time, you know, the city gets. A certain dollar. We are limited by initiative seven four seven that was put into place many, many years ago, and that's why we only get the one percent. Bigger communities can actually get more, but they have to put a ballot mechanism in order to every single. We're small enough, we don't have that. So it does grow over time. Because over time, you slowly grow, but it's very, very small. Any other questions on property tax?
Are these, do we know if these other communities on this? Slide, Chumstick, you know, the county. Cashmere, Wenatchee, are they taking an increase? Are they, are they, do they typically take an increase year after year after year? Are these numbers gonna even grow further? Away from us if we don't?
I am not aware, as a finance director in our state. Of anyone that leaves their one percent on the table.
Okay.
It, it is rare to do it. Uh, Leavenworth did it about. Eight or nine years ago, when we annexed into the fire district. And we purposefully did that to save our residents on their yearly tax. Because at that time, we were somewhat in a soft recession.
Yeah.
Um, over time, though, we did grab, because what it did is it, it made banked capacity for us, meaning. You can collect it, but you haven't collected it. And over time, we slowly grab. Extra bits of it every year with our one percent. Until we were whole again. There are cities out there with banked capacity, I just personally don't know of any of them, and I don't believe any of these folks. Leave their problems.
And I know for a long time, the Association of Washington Cities have been fighting to get that raised from that one to. To a cost of living or three percent max. They almost got it passed last year, it, it came very close, but. We're not as dependent, believe it or not, I mean, you can see how it doesn't. Pay for very mu, I mean, it pays for one piece, uh. But for a lot of small communities that don't have a lot of retail, it's a lot bigger slice, and they're getting further and further. Some, some small towns in our eastern Washington area are talking about. Disincorporating and giving themselves back to the county because. They, they can't keep up at a one percent of. So, you know, that's been a priority for Association of Washington Cities, not so much for Leavenworth, but. There's a lot of.
Have to be on their plate again and stuff.
It'll be on their plate again, they're, they'll, they'll keep, keep bringing it forward. Any other questions? Any other comments? This is a public hearing, so you have to come to the mic and state name and address if you'd like to make a comment.
Yes, question or is it called?
You can ask a question, uh, just know I'm not the assessor.
DJ Robinson, what's the staff's recommendation?
And I'll talk about that in the next budget presentation of what we put in this budget.
Any other questions, comments?
You can count this out as one presentation for.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Normally, these would have been separated by two unique things. Don't get red yet, I can't read. It looks pretty good on their paper forms.
Yeah, I can, I can see it.
Oh, my gosh. I need my share, where did it come?
That was short.
I don't know what happened. Stop, there, there we go, I fixed it, okay, good.
I don't make this spot too small for me, because I know I have a hard time, because it's really far away, but it's also very hard to see, I'm like there in front of it, trying to do it. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge our mission, vision and values of the community. And just to say that from a budget perspective. Nearly every line item, nearly every project fits at least one of these core values. Most of them hit four and four. So these are critical, and I thank the council for all their hard work over the last three plus years. In redesigning these, uh, mission, vision and values. Up here on the board, we do have our mission statement to the public as well above the council, and it is our goal to look at. Adding our values and, uh, our mission statement as well for the public to see at all times. So what's our significant departmental enrichments? We have four main departments within the city. Finance, community development, public work and administration. In finance, we implemented electronic time sheets, that may not sound like a big deal. But we started this in January, we are still troubleshooting in November. Uh, we have maintained our double A bond rating, if you don't know what bond ratings are about, that's critical for the city. To maintain their debt, but also to get better rates when we debar more debt. Double A bond rating is second from the top, being the best. Uh, we have a biennial and federal single audit every year, we completed again, another year with no findings. We reviewed our policies, we built our budget, and we maintain stable fund reserves. Our cash did grow from twenty-four point three million to twenty-seven point one million. And with the future budget anticipating over thirty million capital projects. Our community development department created a public participation program. They received their grant funding for the periodic update, which is the comprehensive plan, I believe. We continued to promote some streamlined permitting and improve transparency. We adopted lots of new housing regulations, we talked a lot about. A lot of new housing regulations, there are still more that are running through the planning commission. But we did actually adopt cottage housing and condominium ownership. And they have been issuing a significant amount of instruction projects and permits for all of those projects. For those of you that do live here all the time, you know exactly which projects I've talked about. And last but not least, we are still looking at and talking with the county on the U G A. If you didn't know, the county actually is the one that is defined by U G A, not us. And so we are working with them. And so we are working with them about the boundary and whether or not we modify the standards. Public Works implemented an electronic work order system, which is utilized by all the departments to communicate, including work orders every single day. We purchased heavy equipment and secured millions of dollars in grants and loan interest loans. We can start the new retail for move projects. We filled vacant positions and created private viewing positions. We drafted our capital improvement program, which is also called the ISOM IP or Integrated Capital Improvement Program. What that means, that when we decide to tear up a street, we look at all the infrastructure under it, and we do it all at once. So that we're not ripping up the street just a few years later to fix a family line, water line, sewer line, so forth. Lots of internal things occurred in our Public Works Department, including standard operating procedures and the leadership book club and installed additional office spaces. The Administration Department created successful quarterly community engagement nets, and any of your faces I see at those, so we thank you for coming because we are adamant about getting more information to you, so that you can get more information back to us. And this is probably the biggest move that I've seen in my seventeen years here with our council and our administration to really push getting the public input back to ourselves. The divisioning sessions, we've improved communications by utilizing our constant contact for Sunday emails. If you're not on that list and you're interested, please visit our website. Uh, we also increased social media and other messaging, improved the frequency of our council meetings by streamlining our study sessions to evenings, so what you've seen tonight is we do them back to back. Where before we used to break them up in the morning and the evening, and then we had all these mini in-between meetings that only hassles the council content. So it made a lot of time to rehash the same conversation over and over again. So just always being together has made things much more efficient for us internally. Parking, Perry, excuse me, Perry has a number of council committees. And parking improvements includes replacing the meters with the kiosks. So you might think that was a public works project, that was actually led by the city administration and has turned overhands over time to each city administrator as we had that turnover. So that's, that's creating significant for our administration that we can speak on, but parking is very, very critical. And we take that very seriously with, with the community. The old meters are coming out, the new kiosks have gone in. We're hoping that everyone is finding those more user friendly. We also completed, almost completed construction of the Glacier Parking Lot. That'll be with every, our
Ribbon cutting is Friday at ten AM.
So, come on down and see the new parking lot at the Holiday Time Champion. We also added capacity for parking with a bullet annex. So for those of you who knew where the level of just espresso stand was. They unfortunately did depart, and so we went ahead and paved that area empty for a little bit more additional parking. And then Horseshoe Lake Parking and, and added ADA Parking occurred. Horseshoe Lake is the new lot that is right down as the very favorite. Oh, that was my biggest one. All right, what did we do in twenty three twenty four? Seventeen million dollars in total capital projects. As I'm be putting this pre-gradation together two weeks ago. Offload playground was one point one million. We are planning to do more with that property. Potentially demolish portions of building, potentially move something else into that. Street Fund, two point seven million dollars. I won't read every one of those, I'm sure you guys can read them. Uh, French Street Rusher, we've started six hundred fifty Ks in stack, we have two million to go. In addition, we've entered into a consultant contract for four hundred ninety five thousand for redesigning the plaza all downtown. Water Fund at one point four million dollars in a variety of projects. And the wastewater fund is three point eight million dollars. The parking fund is three point eight million dollars, much of that is the Glacier Lot. And the equipment purchases, two point five million facility improvements, four hundred fifty K. And running wayland acquisition was two million dollars. That was the correlation. So what's this look like from an overall perspective? It's a whole lot of projects and numbers. The twenty twenty five, you got sixty one million, twenty twenty six, forty eight million, but a lot of that is fund balance. Our debt service is slowly increasing because we have been borrowing debt to do the water fund improvements and the sewer fund improvements. Our all fund capitals, twenty seven million in this year. Twenty is planned for next year, eight is planned for twenty six. Now this whole twenty seven isn't going to come to fruition. And what doesn't happen there will roll into twenty five, and what doesn't happen in twenty five will roll into twenty six. And this bottom line here is our operations and maintenance, mostly all our staff and everything it takes to rent into our facilities. So we did grow to try to keep up with the growth of this given fee. So, that side was all the funds. This slide right here is just our general fund. But it's a very small piece of the whole picture, but almost ten million, almost nine million in twenty five and twenty six. And the same thing will happen here in this fund, is if things don't happen in a certain year, they roll forward to the next year. But we were talking earlier, where does all of our money come from? Well, we all know from the front runner it is, the red line, but some of those are tax. Neck and neck, we've got retail sales tax and parking, parking is about ready to override retail sales tax. A lot of people don't know, where did the retail sales tax go? Fifty five percent of it can put into the general fund. What comes out of that general fund? All that public safety. So because we have that shortfall in property tax, retail sales tax picks up a big portion. The other thing I didn't mention in the general fund net is all these parks. The parks are all covered by So tourism is a two-edged sword. But it does give us a lot of great things in our spending. The other forty five percent of our retail tax goes to our street fund. So we are using as much leverage as we possibly can to feed even the visitors' money into our streets and our communities in a legal manner. And then we have these small ones down here. That green one is property tax. So if, if that's a picture for you, that's where your property tax plays. And as Sully noted earlier, property tax in most communities is the front runner. And retail, some, some communities don't even have one. We already talked about this. But we know seventy two ninety if we take it. We did already talk about this, a little bit more detail of what does the public safety expenditures give us? Give you a minute to kind of look at that. The two that I didn't mention earlier, specific security and parking enforcement. In total though, we have over a million dollars in public safety costs, pretty careful. This is just the graph that I keep, if anyone's ever interested, I have a monthly uh, report that is in our council packet. You'll see a similar graph for different types of uh, taxes that we collect. This is the retail sales tax. And year over year, it's kind of growing, 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 and this top brilliant one is the current year. So you can see how, how it ebbs and slows. I'll point out this little black one right here, and I'll talk about it real quick on another slide. This one is telling you where does your retail sales tax come from, what industries drives our retail sales tax. Our main top front runner is retail, so retail shops downtown. Tied neck and neck is hotels and food services. And the one I like to point out, the oddball, is this orange line that's doing this funkiness right here. So down here, this trough is where I saw construction for the first decade that I worked here. This is what's been happening since I've been here with the growth that we've had with the commercial and homes that are being built. This will continue, it's not as high as it spiked here in twenty seventeen. Because here we are right here. But I think we're gonna see another little spike in twenty four from the new developments that that are in play right now. And there's quite a few of them behind Safeway, plus the new housing units, plus the new housing units on High Street. All of those people buy materials, all of those materials are delivered to Leavenworth. And with destination based sales tax, we give that tax. Lodging tax. This is where I'm going to point out that bit. That was twenty twenty. We hope it took, took a bit of a downturn for the community. We lost a lot of revenue with all the hotels not being able to bring visitors with all the shops out of the shutdown. It was difficult, uh, the first first quarter not so much, it really hit the second quarter hard, it started to come back in the third quarter, and by the fourth quarter, we rebounded enough. Then we were still ahead of twenty nineteen. So our community is very resilient, especially during times of recession and other difficulties, because what we get is we get a lot of state patient that happens to our community. Those who are living that can't travel or ride now come close from Seattle. As Jessica said earlier in her presentation, their biggest visitor to our area is the Seattle Tacoma area. So, four point three million in twenty twenty three, it's a pretty big number. Funding and debt retirement, I just want to note this does not include new debt, quite yet. Just because I don't have the debt schedule, so I can't include them, but parking and uh new debt on water is coming online. So what are you looking at here? Purple is overall debt. So you can see that it's planned at this point to go down over time. The red one is wastewater. We took on that, that new plant and we built it, and it's gonna stay steady. That's a forty year loan. And then the blue line is water, notice it's, it's down to almost nothing, right? But that's where we are targeting next to do massive projects with a lot of new infrastructure for that, we're looking at the wells, we're looking at the water plant, we're looking at mainline improvements, upside being it's just a lot of different pieces that are going on there. So that one's gonna look very similar to the sewer's debt as far as its height is concerned. And then this little green one down here is just a leftover debt that we have on the festival which will be paid off in twenty twenty eight. So, significant projects in our twenty five here. I'm just gonna do it by fund, because everybody can understand different funds have different rules. The general fund, Ozork, demo rebuild. One million is reserved for grant support for that project. City Hall and Cemetery improvements, hundred sixty K, affordable housing support, four hundred K, which includes two hundred K carryover from twenty four. The street fund, closed out curb wraps, incremental street railing, citywide ADA inventory, Ward Strasse sidewalk extension, ski hill base two sidewalks, safe streets planning, and our annual repair and maintenance, all of which is about two million dollars. Lodging tax fund, we, we've uh, begun the downtown plaza design. We have no idea what that cost will be from a construction perspective. But that is what the design is all about, is to really look at what do we want, and they give us some estimates so we can figure out how to pace for it. Uh, we do have a commitment that does go with that project, it's called the Villanite Memorial. And we have that funding sitting in our general fund. Icicle Station, we do have some platform repairs that need to be addressed. And we've got, of course, uh, improvements as well as potentially the newly roundabout gateway if we choose to do some sort of designer. The city pool, lots of repairs. So thank you voters for passing that levy, fifteen cents is hugely critical for us to keep that pool open over the next six years of that annual levy. We do have uh, ongoing concerns with our liner. And we knew as of last year that we have a filter pump that needs to be replaced. And our bathtub floors and deck is chipping as well. Uh, the water fund. We're continuing to study, I kind of mentioned, you know, we've got lots of different irons in the fire and water, so we're doing a lot of planning, we're trying to understand what can we do and how can we do it. A major project though that is planned is the water main technician line from the current well site to Mill Street. Security fencing around the well and the plant is also a long-term goal that we're hoping to get accomplished by next year. Orchard, Orchard, Stafford, and Commercial Streets, their water mains need to be addressed. Cedar Street, Loop completion, and various plant and well repairs and maintenance. All of this ninety point nine million, so those, those big dollars I was talking about, borrowing unfortunately, there's not a lot of grants for water. We get a lot of grants for streets, but we don't get it for water or sewer. They just don't come a lot out there. The sewer fund, we're gonna continue uh, Phase Three main lines, which is getting close to completion. But that's the bulk of this particular one for the sewer funds, three point five million. And the stormwater fund, just some planning dollars, nothing major to be addressed, but if we do do the Chumstick Road upsize, that's embedded in there. And the parking fund, uh, we're gonna finish Glacier, which is almost done, but the costs will still come in until we are fully complete. And then we're gonna continue capacity building with staff, to ensure that we have enough staffing and wayfinding signage to the community. Asgard Blueett and Colchuck are also scheduled for some aesthetic type of improvements for the ecology block, the lighting, the landscaping, just to make sure that we as a city are following our posts, definitely make up a impact. Equipment and computer replacement, small little piece of the pie, but local fund borrowing for garbage truck. And various replacements totaling over eight hundred K. Twenty six, I'm not gonna read all these because pretty much everyone of this says continue, 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 continue. So there are a few new things embedded in this particular one, but most of this stuff is just carryover from twenty twenty five that won't be completed. Key takeaways. So utility rates don't need to be finalized. We've been studying these for months now, so it'll be great study with our firm, we do it every six years. And at this point, I had to say, I have to put a number in. So this is what I put in, zero percent increase to garbage, fifteen percent each year for water, ten percent each year for sewer, and three percent each year for stormwater. Those are not lock and stone, that is just the budget. The council has tough decisions to come up with what it is we actually in up at. Now what is confusing for people is, what does that equate to dollars? It ranges for each one, because when you look at stormwater, and it's currently only six dollars, three percent by only thirteen cents. But when you look at water, then your base rate is fifty dollars, if it were a ten percent increase, that would be five dollars. So, it will vary, but overall, the council's taken into consideration how much, from a total perspective, bill should we be doing, how much can we afford? How much can we not, not afford? In other words, do we continue to not raise rates and let our infrastructures continue to fail? It's a very, very tough decision. The major taxes and parking revenues, so for property tax, we budgeted the one percent plus the new construction. With retail, three percent is conservative for twenty five. I was looking at my numbers today, we actually had a really, really great August, which comes in in my October numbers. Uh, we're at seven-ish percent for this year. So three is very conservative, I, I'm always conservative with retail. I did bump it up to five percent for twenty six because I do anticipate the new growth in population that is gonna be housed behind Rattlesnake. And so with that, we will have some growth in retail, as well as all the construction that's going on. But I don't like to budget for that type of revenue, because that's a one-time revenue, it's like a But I don't like to budget for that type of revenue, because that's a one-time revenue. It's like a windfall. And if we're budgeting for windfalls, we are putting ourselves in a very dangerous situation. So we budget for the baseline, and then if we get more. Great, we're doing good. We've got the money. We can proceed further. We can do more stuff with it once we have it. Lodging tax. I was a little more generous here. However, lodging tax is actually looking a little lower this year than last year. But it was because we got a windfall in twenty twenty three from a business that had been audited by VOR. And we got a pretty significant. Extra kick one month. If you pull that one out. Seven percent's pretty, pretty solid number for lodging tax, but. Keeping in mind that we're not necessarily bringing on a lot of new hotels. We do have one and we know that. But what happens with lodging tax over time is the rates go up by the hoteliers, which in turn we get five percent. So hard scum stuff, listen. Parking revenues. Ten percent increase for twenty five. Most of that is taken into account, uh, stable. Right now, we're running around five to seven percent over prior year, so that ten percent is adding to Glacier. And then twenty six is stabilizing back to our five percent. Overall, we are spending accumulated reserves. Done. Getting close. How much are we spending overall? So all three years, the revenue, all three years, the expense is where we need to focus. Revenue less expense each year. Twelve million, three million, one million. So we're, we're spending. But we're not spending consecutively more and more and more. We're spending less and less and less. But we are keeping our reserves secure. One thing I'll note about this twelve million right here in twenty four is we're not going to do it all. And a lot of that is going to roll into twenty five, and then twenty five will roll into twenty six. This one I gotta get a little closer. All right. So what are we looking at here? The N B fund balance for each year. By which fund? In this column. Counsel, is your financial policy reserves. Twenty five is what we are comparing to that policy. And twenty six is what we are comparing to that policy. I don't ever want to see too much red, because red is bad. This twenty seven percent in the general fund in the first year of the biennium, I'm not concerned about because we are hitting the thirty five. Which hits right on the mark with our reserve goal. Now, the uh, Leavenworth Civic Center, that's our festival fund. We're recovering. We've been recovering without seats COVID. So this is actually a good red, in my opinion, because it is continuing to grow. The pool fund. With the influx of the new tax, we are hitting the first year pretty hard with the capital improvements. We want that pool to operate. And I'm okay with that nineteen percent, because we will get our twenty five percent goal by twenty twenty six. Water. Going to be tough. It's going to be tight. We'll see how we can manage it. We're going to have to play that one every single decision that we make. Are we able to afford it? Are we ready to afford it? Can we afford the debt? Have we put all the right numbers into the rate study to make sure that we are on point with our water fund? By the second year, it is hitting the minimum thirty five percent. Don't get, not too concerned. Several of these are well over the. Five percent mark to necessary, which is all good to me. Uh, I like to call this gravy. The gravy train comes in and we're like, woo. These two bond reserve funds, they're both red. But that's not an issue, because those are internal policies to keep four percent of our overall debt. In each of those funds. Those funds never get touched unless an emergency happens. And we literally have to dip into it to put it back into either our water fund or our sewer fund to do something. We've never pulled money out of those funds since I've been here. Uh, it, the reserve requirement is growing though because of the new debt that we took on. And that's why it's red. So we will definitely budget to increase those amounts in the next biennium. To make sure that we earn, not by everything in the bond covenants that we walk into when we borrow them. And that concludes the presentation. Fly away. At some point, you seem to say something about five percent.
Oh, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. This is a public hearing. We need you to come up and state your name and.
I don't want to take too much time. Um. I just, just had a couple of questions. I'll do my best. Okay.
Name an address, please.
My name's Jennifer Mullins. Live at two, three, four, Vine Street. Um, I, I just, I thought I heard you say something, and maybe I missed. Heard you, uh, about five percent of a lodging tax going to the city. Am I correct? Okay.
Yes. So when you go and you rent a room here in Leavenworth.
Uh huh.
They collect quite a bit of taxes, actually. I think it's over thirteen percent.
Uh huh.
Uh, city Leavenworth gets bought.
Okay, so the, when you say the lodging tax is beginning, maybe three and a half million or four point three million.
Yeah.
That's just the, the city's share?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay. Um. Similarly with retail sales tax, uh, the eight point six. We only get one point one five. Well, the state of Washington gets six and a half percent.
Right, okay.
Um. And so the lodging tax, it sounds like you're building up quite a reserve, uh, more than. We have about between four and five million right now.
Okay.
Which we know is a drop in the bucket compared to the construction that is needed to repair what's.
Okay.
Down there right now.
Oh, okay. So anyway, I, it's okay. I think.
Tell us what can be spent on.
Anything that supports tourism.
Can only spend that money on anything that supports tourism.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One thing I didn't mention in there, uh, it was in there, but I didn't actually cover on it too much, is the parking garage.
Okay.
And that one is the new one. It's in twenty twenty six. And the parking fund is going to fund the study at over three million dollars to look into the development of a parking garage. Which we've done estimates in the last several years, so they've, they've already reached somewhere between forty and sixty.
Design engineers. It's not just that.
It's a significant amount of money.
Engineer. Go ahead. Start it.
Any other question?
Yeah.
You know the drill. I'm excited. I only do budget presentations at the end of the year and everyone goes.
Uh, hi, I'm Adore Isa. Uh, I live at ten, seven, five, seven Eagle Creek Road. So I'm technically in accounting, but a lot of time down here. Um. I'm super passionate about bike infrastructure, public transit, micro mobility. Uh, I work for an autonomous vehicle company before my current job and um. I'm, as a cyclist, I'm a little saddened to see not a lot of bike infrastructure and it seems like there's not a lot of investments. Um, plan, which is a little disheartening. Um. I think there's a lot of local residents that, that do use biking. Um, so I'm just curious if, if there are any investments planned for bike infrastructure expansion. Uh, protected, uh, protected bike lanes. Um. I know Trumpstick is, is county mostly and Eagle Creek, but I can talk to them about that, but um. But yeah, like within the municipality, are there any plans for that kind of thing and micro mobility, including bike shares and then like protected bike lanes and.
Yes. So I'll go on bike lanes first. Many of our streets in the residential are already. Too narrow in order to, to make that happen. Uh, we have done it where we can. Pine Street was a big one.
Ski hill.
Key Hill was the other one. Those are the major thoroughfares. And when we did do those projects, we added those specific for them. Um, so he, since he's been with us, it's been his passion to have lots of bike lockers downtown. We are working on that one. Um, do you have any thoughts?
We'll, we'll continue to add bike racks for people to store their bikes, but as far as protected bike lanes.
No, no, no. I was just talking about the, the storage, like where people, like we have.
Yeah.
And also the stand-up ones.
Yeah, we, 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 we have deployed additional bike racks. We'll continue to do so. But it's not the protected bike lane. I know what you're asking for.
Yeah.
Um, when Highway Two was redone by, by DOT, they did put in a bike lane. It's just a, it's just. Paint on the road, but it's better than nothing.
Sure. And what, are, are there any bikes for micro mobility, um, like bike, uh, like bike shares or. The dreaded scooters, uh, or anything like that. Uh, there's a lot of like first mile, last mile things that happen in the city, I think.
I don't have any background on that one.
No, um.
Unfortunately, the highways, DOTs.
Yeah.
And we, we have had lots of conversations in the past. We did some huge planning studies. Probably about four or five years ago, when we were talking about potential underpass. Under the highway, we talked about a lot of different mobility. I think a lot of great ideas came out of that, but we're reliant on. Wash shot doing those projects along the highway.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any others? Counsel. Right, counsel budget? We'll have one more presentation in two weeks. Uh, we'll try not to bore you with the exact same presentation, but just know, counsel, that these presentations are set specifically by state law. And it is a way to educate our community. So we will have a lot of the similar information. Uh, we'll try to lay it up a little different, maybe throw in some grass insurance, set lots of books.
Yeah.
Little bells blowing, different color. Got it. Okay.
So that was well done, Shantel.
Yeah.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Very well done.
All right. We will close that public hearing at eight oh one. Thanks, Shantel. Our next public hearing. Is restricting peddler permits and maybe, uh, and we'll open that at eight oh two, maybe.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, this item was brought before the council, um, during a study session on September twenty four. So I'm not going to get too into the weeds, um, but this is just in response to, um. Over the last several years, just having difficulty regulating, uh, and enforcing pedaling in the city limits. Currently, we do allow pedaling in residential zones only. Um, and so we will be issuing, typically around this time of year, people will come in and, and get a permit, uh, for. Uh, the last few years have been balloon sales, um, and they're allowed to do that in the multifamily zone. And then on the weekends, when no one's around, they head downtown and start selling, um, in the park and in more of the, uh. Commercial districts. And so, uh, we have received a lot of complaints from downtown business owners, um, and it's just led to, uh. It's created a nuisance also in those residential zones. So in response to the complaints and, um, direction. Uh, from the council, um, we have drafted this code, um, to basically prohibit, uh. Pedaling in, in, in the city limits altogether. Uh. As drafted, there would be a penalty in the civil infraction, which with a maximum fine of two hundred and fifty dollars per occurrence. Um. It would just help staff with, uh, easier enforcement action if it's not allowed. Uh, we have the sheriff on board that can direct people to leave. Um. And with the goal, you know, in the next year to, to, the sheriff, uh, to get them on board with ticketing and actually, um, helping us with that enforcement action. Uh. So yeah, the goal is to just deter pedaling, um, and the non-compliance. I, here to answer any questions, uh, the drafted code stays in your pocket.
Any questions? I guess I didn't quite catch all the, the actual mechanism for enforcement. Is this all carried on? Is the sheriff's office entirely, since it's a, we usually have weekend situation, they're, they're going to be doing enforcement.
They will assist us with the enforcement. We do have, you know, our part-time enforcement, uh, planner enforcement officer, and she's, uh, on. She works every other Saturday. So she is down there helping direct them out of the area. But what was happening is they're like, no, I have a permit to do this, but we're trying to tell them, no, it's only allowed in this zone. And they're sharing the permit with other people, so they're in different locations all over town. And so it just got so hard to enforce and, and getting the sheriff, uh, involved. They show them I have a permit. Their sheriff's office doesn't know our permitting process, so just saying it's not permitted. Really helps ease that and say, no, you're not allowed to, to be down here. You need to move along.
Thanks, Nadine. Wouldn't Pacific Security help at all with enforcement?
Yeah, I mean, they've helped as well, just to be that extra person now. I think last year they, they did help. Uh, it's just become a, it was an issue a couple of years ago and it's just gotten more and more problematic. I actually had somebody come in. Last week asking about getting a permit for this year for bowling service.
Hmm. It's a little bit like whack a mole, you know? I mean, you, you got enforcement, but you don't have them everywhere all the time and they just move. They just go to another place and wait till you're gone and then they come back. And so it's just playing that kind of game. And, and if we've got, again, where it's just plain not allowed and, and there's a fine associated with it. I might talk a little bit more.
Are there no other users of that? Permit system? Trying to think of unintended consequences. Are, are there like scout troops peddling? Players that raise money that would affect them or?
I mean, we, we kind of discussed this before and that's more of like the nonprofit type things. This is like somebody who gets a business license.
Okay.
Go.
This is business versus if your kid's peddling their candy.
The scouts and the, and the.
They have to help pay for those fields that they go to.
Behave yourself. The Cascade Football Team, I think it is, does the, uh, Kodiak card.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they go door to door. They don't got a permit. We don't bother them. Yeah.
Now, this is commercial. Any comments from public? Any more up here, or you'd like to? Ron? And name an address. Ron, don't attend to twenty four Festival Street. I just, uh, the feel of the city. I understand that peddlers are a competition to the, uh, brick and mortar business of. But the city is planning this huge plaza. And, uh, it just seems that having. Method for peddlers, for, for people trying to do a small business, just trying to start. Without having to, uh. I mean, brick and mortar businesses, they, they started small and then they moved to brick and mortar. Like that was mentioned. Travis mentioned that. And I just, I'd like to see a, a diverse business community that allows some pedaling. With some limitations and, uh. It's disappointing to just ban it and say, we, we can't, we aren't, we aren't doing that. So I'm, I'm, that's disappointing, I think. It doesn't really. I mean, when, when we have a lot of people in the city and there's a person standing there selling those stupid LED spinner things and. Those are just fun things that people do and that this stuff prohibited. There, there are many brick and mortars that are, that are going out there and doing that. So I think that's not competition. It's just. It adds to the atmosphere and I'd like that to be considered. That's just my statement.
Thanks, Ron. Thanks for letting me.
Any others? Day nine, we'll close this public hearing at eight oh eight. And we have another one. Public hearing on a Thirteenth Street right-of-way vacation. Reggie.
Yes. So, uh, again, this is a follow-up. I brought this to the council, uh, last month. Um, just as a discussion topic, uh, this project is located directly adjacent to eleven twenty one Commercial Street. Within the multifamily residential zoning district, under a portion of the existing Thirteenth Street right-of-way. Uh. The applicant is requesting vacation at the west thirty-five feet of Thirteenth Street, abutting their property. Uh, the primary purpose of the petition is to bait, bait this, um, for maintenance of education adjacent to the trail system. Um, to reduce fire hazard risk of property damage to the adjacent plots. Uh, vacating this right-of-way, um, is not necessary to reduce these fire risks. Uh, with a written agreement, the city could authorize these property owners to perform the necessary maintenance. Or the city could request an assessment by fire to. Or the city could request an assessment by fire to search for these and perform that maintenance as needed to protect the adjacent, uh, properties and reduce that wildfire risk. Um, recent visioning sessions, uh, you were all involved in, identify the community's desire to provide and maintain green space. And vacating this right of way could impede the city's ability to improve the trail or to create a pocket park at this location. Um, this right of way provides access to city utilities that are located in the alley as well. And it could hinder the city's ability to access utilities at this location. Uh, it also provides a direct access to property owned by Wenatchee River Institute and could create a non-conforming lot, um, by not providing direct access to a public street if vacated. Uh, I did receive, and they were all forwarded on to you, all, um, public comments and opposition of this request. Uh, from Tracy Owen, Carol Anne Seaman, Sean Seaman, and Judith Donovan. Uh, as summarized in the staff report in tab twelve of your packet, uh, the vacation is inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Uh, proposed vacation is not necessary for fire protection and vegetation management, and again, would impede the city's ability to improve and provide those public utilities, uh, within the current right of way. Uh, the vacation does not recognize or support the transportation value of trails as identified in the comprehensive plan as well. And therefore, staff is recommending denial of the requested vacation. Uh, you have everything in your packet, uh, staff report summarizing those findings, and I am available.
Alright, let's join with the suit.
I think petitioners are are waiting.
One, bring your mic. Yeah, hello. And unmute yourself and speak, you wanna speak?
Yeah, hi, my name is Annette Bjorkland, I reside at twelve twenty one Commercial Street.
And I'm Brad Bjorkland, also residing at twelve twenty one Commercial Street.
So first, thanks again for hearing this, um, I'd like to state that our primary objective um, for bringing this to the council and submitting the application is so we could build two uh cottages, uh, thousand square foot cottages on this property, so again, the primary objective is to build two thousand square foot cottages. Um, the reason that we actually got excited about this is because of the information that we received from the city to our home on the new cottage housing and the approval of those small cottages, uh, that have already been, uh, vetted. So we were looking at the land next door and thinking that would be a perfect spot to build two cottages. And some friends of ours knew that that space has always been a well, historically, it's a road, so that's why it's fifty feet wide, and that there's an application process for the homeowners that are next to vacated land to then work with um, the city to acquire that land, so again, like our entire intent behind this application is to create additional housing for the community. So while we understand that, um, we also met with, um, the public works, and there are no actual utilities that run through that space. Um, we also met with John, um, Park Superintendent, and there were no plans for improvements to that area for a park. Um, the area right now is pretty heavily vegetated, and it's what I would describe as a bit of, um, a hole. Um, Brad, do you wanna add anything?
No, I think we spent a lot of time talking about the fire wise, and while that was one of our goals, um, I think it probably wasn't enough of work or effort to kind of vet out some of the high-density housing opportunities in this particular application.
So again, our goal is to increase community housing, so I think really if you're looking at this from a city council and a um, a vote kind of for or against, it would be what is really the most important benefit for our community, because the amount of space that we're talking about in total is seven thousand square feet, so total space is seven thousand square feet. Of that seven thousand square feet, we're requesting four thousand nine hundred. And that four thousand nine hundred would again allow us to build two thousand foot cottages in that area, so if we're talking about like a pocket park or something like that, you're really talking about a pocket park that would be four thousand nine hundred square feet. It's not, it's not a huge amount of space. I think that the community would be better served through housing than, um, taking that four thousand nine hundred square foot and doing something else with it, but again, that's for the council to decide what you think the best priority is, is the best priority housing, or is the best priority four thousand nine hundred square feet of open space? Uh, we're available if you have any questions.
Alright, any, but the council have questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Maggie, so the southeastern point of that the vacation request, it does cut into the trail, correct?
Right.
The very bottom of it, if you look at the diagram, um, yes, there would have to be an easement agreement um, for that bottom part of the trail, it's not a significant portion. Um, when we worked with once in engineering, we actually came up with a couple of different designs. Um, we thought this was the best path forward. Some of the other designs basically would have required the relocation of the entire trail, which we don't want. Um, cause again, our our home backs up to that trail, we we love that space, so this was kind of the best of both worlds, we thought.
And in tab twenty, it also suggests that if forty-nine hundred square feet was to be vacated, there'd be an easement for that small portion of trail that does cross the southeastern portion of the discussed property.
Hey, other comments, questions?
Curious if there's a a mechanism, uh, obviously vacating that property doesn't guarantee that or require them to build anything at all, right? Um, is there, is there mechanisms, so say they don't get an approval on this uh, because there's no guarantee, is there another, uh, way they could approach it that would ensure that housing is supplied to city residents, or is is it you vacate it and they do whatever you want?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the mechanism might be to say you must do.
I think low-income housing should end of the conversation.
Yeah, right.
Green space, yeah.
It's not a giving, though, I mean, the way that the rule is written, from my understanding, is that, uh, we would actually be purchasing that
You would, that's true.
City, so it's not a gift. It's a
I misspoke, you're right.
Yes, the property would be assessed at fair market value, and then then we would leave the city that fair market value.
For you to develop the green space. That we would be selling to you.
Or whatever.
Yeah, or whatever.
Yeah.
Once it's so sold, it's
Yeah.
But it's a great question, I mean, you know, you you guys just have to trust that we're good people and we're gonna do the right thing, which is to build which is to build on it, um, cause we believe in community housing.
Let's take it one for me, just looking at this, with your first two points were about maintaining trees and fire wise, but it's really the conversation is really by your third point, it's really coming down to that, you want to develop it, it just seems it seemed a little misleading initially, that that you wanna trim the trees and make it fire safe or develop on it, but it seemed like you wanted to develop on it.
We would like to do both, I mean, in order to develop on it, we're gonna have to remove some trees, cause it's a very heavily wooded lot. Um, so I would say, yes, we want to maintain fire wise, and yes, we want to develop on it, I think those two things go hand in hand for us. Especially, cause we've had a history of trees falling down in our neighborhood. One of them came through our neighbor's house.
Yeah, I walked down there today, and there's several big branches just hanging there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, yes. And one tree, one tree actually snapped off this last winter. It, we got lucky and it fell away from our house, it fell over the trail towards the garden house, didn't hit the garden house. But, I mean, it is, so I'd say it's both, we want to build and we want to remove some of those trees.
Right.
Great questions.
Other comments, anybody? Yeah? Come up, name and address on the social share.
Um, I'm Mike Cummings, and I live at one oh two five one North Road, although my wife and I own a house at twelve thirteen so we're the neighboring properties. Uh, a number of us wrote in comments as far as our desire to preserve green space within town and all parks that we might own, uh, I do have one question at the outset. Although, i- I guess the utilities don't go down that trail. I thought I was under the understanding that in that trail system behind that utilities are actually running through there. And that this was an access to that utility quarter, is that correct? Okay. And so, you know, again, we need this. Uh, I believe in preserving as much green space within the the city as we possibly can. And it it appears that this is also a bit of a stormwater drainage thoroughfare, I don't know, you know, how much of that is, but but that entire swell would need to be then built in in order to build construction on and that sort of thing, and there would have to be, you know, some sort of water accounting. But in the long, the short, I think that it's it's a desire for a number of the neighborhood residents to just leave it as it is, leave it a green space. Uh, even though it might only be fifteen foot developed now. Uh, if in the future, you know, there needs to be more ADA access, we can provide that, if we wanted to provide more bicycle accesses and things like that. Uh, just because something is not yet developed within a city structure doesn't mean that we shouldn't, you know, preserve the possibility that we can use it for arts purposes and more trail purposes in the future, so, uh, yeah, it's it's our it's our idea that we would like to preserve that means this and wish to stay as it is, thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
Feel the unmute yourself, Rob? Nope, maybe it's the wrong one.
Uh, it's Tony, I was unmuted.
Sorry, they hit the wrong one.
Okay, Tony first.
So, good evening, my name's Tony Kaiser, I'm president of the Ski Hill, Leavenworth Ski Hill Heritage Foundation, I currently reside at P O Box fifty-four and also one forty-six. That was a joke, guys. Okay, so let's just keep going, so this application, I think
No, physical, give us physical address, please.
Physical address is one two six five nine Shore Street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, um, just a couple of points here, um, the city of Leavenworth has partnered with the Shalan Douglas Pathways Organization, including the Shalan County uh, Land Trust. If you go to the website, the city is clearly labeled a partner for this pathway, if you look at the pathway plan, it includes a a great pathway from Leavenworth to Shastan on down to Wenatchee, which is a huge goal for this community. Every, so, let's focus on that, so we've already decided as a community to join this pathways organization, so let's maintain and or preserve that. I think that's really important, and then one of your first speakers that spoke about fifteen minutes ago, he was concerned about bicycle access and pathways. What a classic example, I'm glad he spoke. Um, it's fantastic that he has concern about mobility and access to those pathways, and this is another reason that this pathway cannot be restricted in any sense of the word. The second thing is fire wise. If there is an issue with city property that is fire wise, it is the city's responsibility to manage that as a fire wise property. There are multiple, multiple opportunities, grants and other things. If I invite anyone down to the fire department for a commissioners meeting, there's tons and tons of avenues for which we can manage fire wise and be smart about it. We don't need to surrender property to a private developer for the purposes of fire wise. I live in a fire wise environment as well, but I manage it within my own domain. The third point I'd like to bring up is access to the waterfront. Um, the W R I, which I'm a big supporter of is all about environmental stewardship and access to the environment, that waterway pathway along the entire riverfront park tying into the barn beach and beyond is vital, we should not restrict it. Um, and I'm sorry, but the folks that have purchased that property knew the condition at the per- at the time of their purchase, and we should not, as a community, surrender and narrow that opportunity for the benefit of a of a private developer. Thank you.
Hey, Tony, Rob, can I try to promote, can I try to promote Rob if he wants to listen to him?
Hi, guys. Yep, got it, sorry, took a little while to go forward, Rob Eaton, um, twelve twenty-seven Front Street, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, um, uh, for the record, I'd like to, uh, voice my strong, um, request for not forwarding and going forward with this application. I've submitted emails to the city council, so I request that be part of the formal record as well, so Maggie has that, uh, part of her record. Uh, I'll try to be, I'll be very brief, um, number of the reasons why I'm not supporting this application is because mentioned before by others, but I truly believe that this property should be in, remain in public holding for use that staff has recommended, um, for access to our utilities, green space, consistent with our visioning. Um, and I strongly believe that we should work on improving our access to the wonderful, um, trail system we have for the health of our community. Um, equally is important priority, uh, the health and well-being of our citizens as well as um, our visitors, and that park does offer that, so I strongly urge that we do not move forward with it, and most importantly it is not consistent with the city council, with the city, um, councils, uh, and the city's law uh, with vacationing, so it's, if we go forward with this, it would be inconsistent with our code. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Other wanting to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to touch on a couple of those, um.
Just a minute, no, you haven't been recognized, and we need to get everybody a chance to talk before we hear anymore, so um, it was our
Just the applicants.
The best. So, come.
I'm Karen Hare, thirteen eighty Commercial Street. I think it's a great idea to try to limo the conifer trees and take out some ladder pulls and make make it a bit more safe as far as fires go. But I am opposed to the vacating of the alley. One thing that, uh, I notice as a neighbor is that space is used for snow storage. There's no shoulder on the paved part of the road on either side of this trail. And the city plows come and they push a lot of snow in that gully, it's a gully. If we get heavy rains, which happen every two or three years, like really heavy rains, there's water flowing down there. Any kind of filling in the gully and trying to build a house on it, I think might really jeopardize the building. The, um, space is used by many people, including the people of the garden house next door. They're not just using the trail, they're using the greenery and the birds and the trees and the noise and the nature of that alley. It's not just the fifteen feet trail, it's the whole thing that they're using. And I really think that the city should keep that property And I really think that the city should keep that property as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thanks, Karen. Yeah, Sharon.
Sharon Lums, and I reside at seven eight four eight Old Bridge Road, but my husband and I owned the house directly across the street for many, many years. Uh, we rented it out and so spent a lot of time on that property, actually. And so, another house with similar limits and a little background on that property, about fifteen years ago, there was a huge, um, community outpouring of volunteerism to build that trail. The Land Trust and the city and the Manche River Institute, Institute Partner. And there was little types all the way up to ninety-year-olds that spent in one day rushed that whole thing out and sounds like at least be done again. Um, and so I'm all in favor of um, cutting out some hazard trees and, and limbs, um, but that's a completely separate issue from vacating the alley. And the community has shown a big treasure discovery. And once you vacate an alley, it's gone forever. You don't know what we might want to do with that in the future. Uh, I am a huge supporter of growing our housing stock in the city. But we should not be vacating public land for housing, uh, if that needs to happen on existing, existing property. All my points here. Yeah, that's it. Trails and parks, uh, are super valuable and I can't even, I didn't know anything about this until this morning and I had something. And, and I know, um, George Clinton, they're wonderful people. It's know your hearts are in the right place, but the location is wrong.
Well, should think you didn't hear about it tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Others? Anybody else? And I would have to say, Maggie, that I have a number of emails that came to me that I assumed you got, but needed with them, so I will forward those to you as well.
Yeah, I have a bunch.
Yeah, there were about half a dozen that were sent specifically to the city council. Those should all be placed in the record.
So we'll have others to add, I think, is the point. Any other comments? Seeing anybody step forward, so we'll close this public hearing at eight thirty-two. Did they wanna?
They wouldn't be talking.
I think they want to rest their butt, is that appropriate petitions?
Were they trying to speak earlier or is that it?
Are the petitioners allowed to speak again?
Oh, if they want to.
Are you wanting to go again?
Yeah, I just, I mean, we completely hear the public and the concerns around open space and we're also huge proponents of open space. I'm also a huge proponent of providing more housing for our community. So I think it's just, this space has been there unutilized for a very long time. Um, it doesn't change anything about access to the trail. The trail ma- maintains. It would be exactly as it is. There's nothing that would change about the trail. The trail is, um, wide enough for bicyclists, for even the little Kubotas that the city drives down. There's also no public utilities that run on this trail. And when the entire sewer work was done, um, that actually this this area wasn't even impacted. So I, like I said, completely am a proponent of open space, but I also think that we need more housing in our community. So really kind of comes down to what's more important to the city council. Four thousand nine hundred square feet of open space or two small cottages. So again, I appreciate your time and I thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, we will close this public hearing at eight thirty-four. And we now will move on to our last public hearing, unit lot subdivisions. And there's also Maggie. That will be opened at eight thirty-four.
Okay, thank you. So this is
Yeah, I inadvertently, it came out of the meeting.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I brought this to the council as a discussion item during study session, um, last month. Uh, for those of you that were here, I don't want to kind of go through everything in too much detail, but, uh, this is, uh, Senate Bill fifty-two fifty-eight amended R C W fifty-eight seventeen zero six zero to require all cities and towns to adopt procedures for unit lot subdivision. Um, and this allows a parent lot to be separately owned in individual unit, separated and individually owned as unit lots. These changes in the state law, uh, are mandated. And it also, uh, unit lot subdivision, uh, unit lot subdivision was listed, um, as one of the top priorities on the twenty twenty-four docket along with condominiumization. And we already addressed that previously. This is kind of the second part to that. Um, again, it's about ownership, um, allowing uses that are currently allowed on the lot, structures that are currently allowed under the parent lot to be individually sold, um, separately and owned. So for example, you have a house in an A D U that's currently allowed on a parent lot. You'd be able to unit lot subdivide and have the A D U on sep, and sold separately from the, the single family residence. Um, as drafted, this tool would be used in all zoning districts for residential development of two or more units. So this could be used for A D Us, duplexes, townhomes, um, and cottage housing, uh, if allowed by the underlying zone. Um, it does not change the density or the design standards of the underlying parent parcel. So that's one important thing to remember. Uh, the planning commission reviewed this draft code in July and August during their regular meetings and, uh, they, they recommend some changes to the final draft code, which is in your packet. Um, I met with the P C last week during their standard meeting and they did, uh, quite a recommendation. If you look, uh, at the drafted code, it's, uh, seventeen seventeen one forty A. Um, they recommended removal of that section, which limits, uh, the size of the parent parcel to one acre. Uh, it kind of created an unnecessary barrier for utilizing this. And so they, the as a group recommended, um, the council modify the draft code by removing that section. If you remember on the October eighth, uh, meeting when we discussed this, uh, the fire marshal, uh, Mike Smith came in and provided a response to comments that we received from R C three regarding fire um, concerns. And then I also gave a presentation. I put a copy of my presentation in your packet as well. It went through some different scenarios of real life situations in town where this could potentially be utilized. Um, and then, uh, in your packet, you also have a copy of the, uh, staff report that was presented at the public hearing, um, for the planning commission back in September. Um, I did accidentally leave out comments that we did receive from Suzie Lane back in August. And I thought they were in the packet and I sliced them and she brought those, that's my attention. And so I do have her comments in support of, uh, of this, if you just have done along. I sincerely apologize for leaving that out. I also received comments from Jennifer Mullins in support of the code and you should have been forwarded those as well. So I don't have a copy of that, um, today. But, um, the, the planning commission is recommending the council adopting this code as provided with that one, uh, modification. As I previously noted. And I am available for any questions and I did bring, uh, uh, flash drive with some of those examples if the council needs me to provide that again. They are in your packet. That concludes my presentation and I am available if you have any questions.
Any comments from the public? Sure.
I'm Jennifer Mullins again, two, three, four, ninth street. Did want to comment on this. I don't know, she just very well. I was a little confused later after I realized you answered my question, but then I didn't understand it quite. So I don't know if I should ask later a conversation about the budget?
Yeah, the five percent, is that?
I'm sorry, we really can't.
I can step out if you need.
No, I'll, I'll talk.
Okay, fine. I, I, I'm sorry. Okay.
So on this issue, we're talking about fairly good sized lots, I guess. Lots that would be big enough for two houses, right? And I think that's great because to be able to build two houses like that and to subdivide because otherwise you're really limiting the options and you're making it so that you're, it's more likely that a big house that's really expensive and most people would not be able to afford to be built versus a couple of smaller houses that, you know, would, would, would work. And I, and I suppose in some cases, there may already be one house. And you could add another house. So if a parent had a child that was, you know, wanting to have a house, they could maybe have another and that really, really nice because there's a lot of families leaving our area. Um, so, um, that I guess is my main thing in support, that it just allows much more affordable housing set. I, I know there's limited opportunities, but any opportunity you can take seems that there might be more opportunities than just the, the last, um, uh, issue talked about.
Thank you, Dave. Others? Yeah.
So should I?
Suzie? Yeah. You should. If you want to tell us anything, you gotta get up.
Name and rank.
No, we don't.
No, you don't. Suzie Lane, three, two, one, Tom Water Drive. And first off, thank you, city council. Thank you staff for all your hard work. I appreciate it. I am so, uh, in support of the unit lot subdivision. It's a great idea for increasing choices and stock in Leavenworth with many positive aspects. One, causes no greater visual impact than a big house on the same lot. Complies with the same building standards as old units must fit within the parent lot. It complies with the same fire standards as the parent lot. It frees the property owner to have more building choices. And sometimes, you know, property owners like to have more choices. But the biggest thing to me is it provides more home ownership opportunities, which can help families getting a smaller house to then build equity to get into a larger house. And that's all I have to say. And I think you guys probably mostly know, I grew up with housing insecurity. My dad died when I was eleven. My mom struggled to keep a roof over our head. We lived in a single family home originally, but after he died, we were in apartments, duplexes, um, subsidized housing. One time, we were in the basement of a friend living in, in her basement. So I understand just how important housing is and the more options that we can give to people, I think the better. So please consider a good one.
Thank you. Thanks, Suzie. Others?
I've got a question.
Yeah.
So my understanding is this is a mandate from the state, correct? So we're not really, uh, debating whether we are gonna do some sort of version of state mandate. This is something we have to implement.
Eventually.
Eventually.
You could, you could kick the can down a, a little while.
Will be required in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're trying to get ahead of the game to take advantage sooner than later, but other comments? Anybody?
Twelve seven hundred Spring Street. Yeah, I think the comments have already been made, but I'll just, uh, support them. And I think that, uh, you know, it doesn't fundamentally change any of the, uh, any concerns about density. There's already existing ordinances in place for that. Um, this is all about owner, ownership and creating more opportunities for ownership so that and I think, uh, so that families can move out of poverty, right? You know, and have a smaller home option to to actually own for those themselves. And as over, already was stated, uh, I mean, that's how you gain security in life is, is, you know, by having home, uh, housing security. So I think it's a great opportunity to, to maybe address something that isn't about density, but about helping uh, you know, maybe some folks that are struggling in our community. So I support it.
E J Robinson, one, one twenty-six. I, I agree with what everyone was saying, especially that for ability to invest. I did have a question. I, under, with the uh, at least ten percent of the housing units. Does that mean that if you subdivide, then we hope on housing unit on that subdivision, then that will be affordable housing? Right before recording. Here's
Okay.
A red, it says at least twenty-five percent of the housing units. So, uh, lots subdivision, Charlie probably established just whole house.
That was a recommended change from R C three.
That's not, that's not the draft code. That was just a comment letter that was making some suggested changes.
This is not for affordable housing, though.
Yeah.
It's about providing options for ownership.
Those are ownership codes on, hold on.
Thank you. It's true, this could create more opportunities for affordable units that would stay affordable. For instance, men could use it to build units that would be permanently affordable, but that's not what this measure does in and of itself. But it could create the opportunity for that.
So it doesn't restrict it.
Yes, right. Other comments? Any online? No. Nope. Okay, we will close this public hearing at eight forty-six. And believe it or not, that's our last public hearing. You're thinking that you would
Definitely, so the hearing's closed, right?
Yeah.
So, so, uh, I, I would like to, um, chain, I met you at the community visioning and I met Travis. I'm a builder and I've worked, I've done a lot of townhomes and, and zero lot line unit lots. And I think doing this is great. It's the right step towards ownership, like you're trying to do. But there's another step and I'm trying to ask if I could be invited, if you had my number and everything, to explain what the next step is to really create, uh, diverse housing and affordable housing. Workforce housing was my focus. And I, I just need a chance in an informal way to, and I'll take my time to create a presentation with slides to show you what I'm talking about.
Well, that would be appropriate for another time and another, but you know, and the, and the one that the place where I would suggest you go first is our housing committee, which is made up of community members and and some council members and
They'd be very receptive to that.
Yeah. And start with the housing committee and you can get, you can contact city hall and Yeah. And, and start there, but um,
Thank you.
We're then ready to move on to resolutions, ordinances, and I'm just, again, going to remind everyone now when we get into the actual discussion. A number of these items that we are reminded to be respectful of one another and acknowledge that we may disagree and that's okay. Um, prior to making comments, you must be recognized by the chair here and you must come forward to make those comments. Um, we won't receive any comments from, um, from the chairs out there. Uh, a, address the council as a whole, not individuals. And keep your comments focused on the topic that's being discussed at that time. So with that, we'll move into our action items. The first one is resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. And this is setting our legislative priorities for twenty twenty-five. You've all had that before you, um, in a previous time. Um, this just moves forward with what we're going to work on with our state legislators. Um, and it brings forth the, the items that, uh, we've done in the past, uh, priority being housing, being fire, um, issues in our area because of our fire situation uh, and infrastructure, uh, issues. But along with those, two specific capital projects. One, the completion of our, uh, road between the Comstick and Titus and also, um, grants to, uh, along the line of moving the library over to Osborne. So those two capital projects will also become a part of our legislative priorities listed here. So with that, um, I didn't hear any other comments from any of you, so I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Level where City Council moves to approve Resolution twenty one dash twenty twenty four legislative priorities for twenty twenty five.
Second. Moved by Plank, seconded by Shane. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passage unanimously. Item fifteen. Annexation of Marson Drive, ordinance sixteen ninety nine. Maggie.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, on October eighth, the council held a public hearing on this issue, um, requesting annexation of nine, six, four, six, Marson Drive. Uh, the property owner is requesting this annexation of point five two acres, um, adjacent to Mine Street. Uh, this is currently from the urban growth area. Um, and the purpose is to, um, encourage multifamily involvement and, uh, city water and sewer services are already available. This, uh, item did go before the, uh, I can't think of it. And they.
All that group.
They made a determination, uh, presumed the R T W, uh, thirty six, ninety three, one, ten, that the review by the board was unnecessary. So it's before you today for action.
Intervene a motion.
The Level River City Council moves to adopt ordinance sixteen ninety nine, annexation of nine, six, four, six, Marson Drive.
Second.
Who's second?
Oh, whoa.
You, you just so stopped over there. Uh, moved by Sharon, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion?
Was there any staff recommendation or? That doesn't have any recommendation or?
I mean, I, I would say, yes, it's in the urban growth area, it has city services. It will, it's multifamily zone. The owner wants to build.
So he said, right?
He, well, he says his. He wants to build a home for his mother. Uh, he was trying to work with the county, but because we require, uh, for additional sewer services, they need to be within city limits. That's the reason for it. So, kinda, I believe held up, uh, permitting situation, so.
City has, has a lot of advantages annexing properties and.
Yeah.
Particularly if they're right next to the city services.
Right.
And they want to build.
Yeah.
And we're easy to work with.
We are, much easier, yeah. All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passage unanimously.
Thank you.
Ordinance seventeen hundred, adopting our ad valorem tax. Can tell.
E G Mayor, Council, I believe I have two motions here for you. Nope, I combined it all into one. Very easy for you to deal. Um, my recommendation is to please proceed forward with your one percent increase. You will note that the dollar amount seventy two, ninety six, ninety seven is slightly more than the seventy two, ninety. That does not make a difference from the, uh, assessor's perspective. They will collect the maximum allowable per initiative, uh, seven, four, seven. Then with the second portion of this motion, you're authorizing the mayor to sign the tax levy certification. If you happen to look at that document, you'll notice that it is approximately twenty thousand dollars more than what we are actually adopting. What that, the purpose of that is to allow the assessor, if they've made any mistakes in their calculations, is to actually collect as much as you possibly can collect. Because they are all preliminary values.
That is the normal procedure?
Yes.
You've done this before.
We give them an approximation so that when it does come to the taxation calculation, we're able to collect the, the full one percent if it ends up being more than that seventy two, ninety six.
Okay. If, if you guys said it exactly and it came up higher, we wouldn't get it.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
So we give ourselves some flexibility.
Yeah.
But it, but it's capped at one.
Yeah.
Yep. The Level River City Council moves to adopt ordinance seventeen hundred with the ad valorem tax increase of seven thousand, two hundred and ninety six dollars and ninety seven cents, which is an increase of one percent from the previous year and authorize the mayor to sign the tax levy certification.
Second.
Moved by, and seconded by Zeke. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passage unanimously. Um, the next one is a supplemental agreement, Clever City. Dalton?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Back in the spring of twenty three, you guys approved the contract for, for a pilot, um, project to install aerial sensors from a Bavarian company called Clever City at, uh, Asgard, Blewitt and Colchuk. Those are P one, two and three, Sharon.
Thank you.
And we expected that, that project to deploy, uh, and that pilot to begin in June of that year. Unfortunately, um, what we bought from Clever City were, uh, sensors that were to be hardwired in to a power source. And it took us about a year to finally install these. We had to buy different sensors from them. We had to buy, um, solar powered uh, sensors due to the locations and the lack of, um, power gates where we needed to tie them in. What we didn't realize at the time was that these new battery sensors actually require monthly fee. So this is simply a, a supplemental agreement to make right what we wronged, to which was, um, bringing you the wrong cost estimate because the cost estimate changed due to this equipment change, due to the lack of power where we needed to install the sensors. So that's where we are. Um, that is what is before you is this supplemental agreement for an increased, uh, amount of twenty four thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. Now. A heads up that at the next meeting, you will be reviewing a much more significant contract cost to expand this pilot to all of our service park lots.
It's number twenty two.
Is it still? All right. Later on tonight. Is there another one?
This is a one time fee or?
This, uh, well, it's, there's a monthly service fee, but this, yeah, this gets us the agreement that you approved, well, not you, Sharon Chang.
You're with us.
Right, but, but the council approved back then didn't include this monthly, um, cost. So this supplemental agreement makes us all with the vendor. Was there an understanding when when Clever Cities presented this that it was to be powered?
Yeah.
And we. Yeah, we knew how to power it, but we, and when they reviewed the, the locations with us, we just simply didn't know enough about the power sources. So they were identifying some light poles that are, um, interruptible power supplies, for lack of a better word. They only turn on when the sun is down. So we need sensors to be powered all the time.
We can't use our light poles?
Shannon will know more. She was the point person on this project.
There's still power.
That's why.
That's why. Um, we can use our light poles. What we found is that the power source was in different poles and it was just at the end of the day, the battery power points were much easier for us. It took us almost a year to get this project going. And that is why we used them. These are also better sensors because they're a little bit newer. Because we have the year delay.
Why was it a year delay too? I'm sorry, that's my question. Why did it take a year? We, we had the units and it took us a year to install.
It did.
Why?
Um, several different reasons, um, trapping that power source was one of them. Getting what Trishy come in, uh, was another one.
Were there other systems that you're waiting for? Is, is, is part of a package, right? You can't just get, you needed two different things, right? You've got the sensors, but you needed the software. There's a couple of things in play too, right?
What we order.
Yeah.
Is that we have Clever City come and do an estimate of what we needed in our town. And based on what they saw with the existing light poles, we structure, we had, we assumed that we were going to be able to hand these on the. It's to power.
Yeah.
And, and make it work.
Yeah.
What we found is that we have very difficult time with was dot getting into those. And we decided to, instead of trying to get them on the light poles, which was delaying even further.
Yeah.
That they have this other option, um, that they had tested out and they offered it to us.
Okay, so that's the solar ones.
That is the solar ones.
So the monthly, what's the monthly fee for these?
Monthly fee is for the, uh, the solar powered battery.
What's the, the cost? What's the cost of this monthly fee, monthly? I do love a good.
Thank you.
Does the month seem to be September, December, ten thousand?
Right.
Per month.
But that is.
No, that's for four months.
That's for four.
Okay.
Our monthly fees for battery sensors run about, uh, I believe it's two thousand dollars is the cost and then we have an annual, uh, fee of twenty five.
Just to understand what the, I guess, what we're getting for that, we're renting batteries?
No.
That's what, wait, that word is confusing to me. I just want a clarification.
We are renting batteries. That, that is part of it, but it's also their own for the local system.
Okay. It's a, there's a software as a service model. Who would pay that anyways? I'm just trying to, we're trying to differentiate between electricity, the hardwired versus that's what we're talking about here, right? That's what we're trying to figure out is software is gonna happen no matter where, if it's hardwired or if it's electric.
But you're, but you're paying the monthly fees for that.
Yeah.
We're gonna pay that anyways.
That's the point, is this is, this is changing to a different system of getting that information to them, right? To populate.
Yeah. So we're, we're gonna pay this anyways, right?
Right.
I don't mean to belabor, but the, the wording on the here says an additional fourteen thousand dollars is needed to cover unanticipated monthly fees. We anticipated monthly fees, but because of the battery powered, solar, solar powered devices, add additional monthly fees.
The original contract that we brought to council did not have these battery upgrades.
Correct.
We went ahead with the project, um, with the battery sensors that I had installed. The, the fees that you are seeing is what was naturally occurring because I'm with the battery sensor versus one that was hardwired in for lights.
So not the monitor, monitoring software. The monitoring software are the monthly fees or rented, that's the fee for the battery?
Yeah, that whole thing works together. The monitoring, it goes to a service fee that's watching all of your spaces.
What was unanticipated then?
The battery fee because I added.
So we're renting the batteries for ten, uh, forty thousand dollars a year?
No, no. I'm not, I'm not explaining it as well as I said. No, this is the fee that goes with the battery sensors, not just the battery, but the entire package to make it work.
Yeah.
To keep it with our portal and to make sure everything is sensed. So it was a different fee because it's a different type.
It's an upgrade or it's more expensive than the initial one.
It's a different type of software that they're running.
Okay.
Every sense.
Yeah. Does it have increased functionality? Like, but you, you get more information or better information?
Yeah, I mean, I'm getting, um, accuracy, occupancy data. This was also part of trying to get the sensors back online. We had the sub training sensors in, how that did not work, that we turned off. And we, I have been trying to get our sensor capability back on. One of the reasons I don't want my animals to have overhead and they don't have to worry about the snow and the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Where I did with the pups. So it's, that's why we went with this. And the whole goal, you'll hear a little bit later, is that I can tie these sensors, all of the information on these sensors are going to funnel to, um, to our customers and not only eventually with some information science at the beginning and.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Shannon, they're gonna, the twenty four thousand, is that just once a year? Is it like every year? Is there like, I'm just wondering how much this, do we know what this is gonna cost us, like?
Annually.
Yeah.
We do have an annual cost, um, let's see, one time thirty eight. Our annual costs with everything completed looks like it was twenty five thousand, correct, Sophie?
I think so.
Yeah, that sounds.
And then we are adding another twenty two. I'd like to add another twenty two with the extension.
So every year we're gonna at least put, besides this, next year we should be laying out another twenty five thousand for replacement of solar batteries?
Replacement.
No, just to add more lots.
Oh, as we add more lots.
Four sensors.
Okay.
Capacity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it all the way across town.
Okay. All right.
Keep in mind this gets paid by the parking fund.
Well, right, we're twenty six million.
That is true.
Right.
It is.
And I'm, it's not even about the money, uh, because it's a drop in the bucket. You guys did an amazing job and it's just, it's amazing, um, the dollars and you're investing back in, into these amazing programs and parking management, right? I just don't want to see like what the, it just the parking meters, right? And it was kind of, it was, it was mess, it was crunchy, right? And we got a better solution now. And then we, we got these and we're gonna hardwire them. It took a year and it's like, you know what I mean? I just want to get, I know you do too. I just want to make sure we're all getting what we pay for and they're clear and they're, you know, they're presenting and.
We are getting, we are getting what we pay for with this company. I've been using them since we put the three sensors up. And it's given this data that we can pay attention to. Um, I can see exactly how many people were in a lot when we made, when we go. Um, so, so it is valuable for us to be able to, um, manage our resources more wisely to find those lots that we've had problems in. We can now see and manage those areas. We can also then shoot our, our public when we're having big events. We can, we, we give them the knowledge to where to park if they're coming to town and, and everything is eighty five percent occupied. It might be a great idea to stop here.
Yeah.
So that's one of my goals to seek it as much information to people before they get into our town and start searching.
Keep moving, keep moving.
Keep moving, keep, and get the right passenger to the right place. They're frustrated. They just want to stop. So this is all technology that, that the city was promised to with Civic Smart. It did not deliver. They caused quite a bit of problems. And so that is Sophie, I know, and working to get us back to the place that was the vision for our partner.
Yeah.
Shannon, through this process, has the city, is the city paid more money than what they've gotten? I'm not, I'm not saying that right. Have, have we lost money on this?
No.
I mean, I know we have money, but was there money?
We did not.
When you switch something out, then.
We did not.
And we bought it.
With Civic Smart, it, it, it paid for itself. If you look at the, the parking revenue fund, which is, which is helping, um, all of the improvements we have made is to get us further along, not to cause us to be bad.
Did Civic Sm, Civic Smart ever give us money back for them not having the right stuff or?
That is still, um, in the legal court.
We, we still have sixty thousand dollars in maintenance that we have held on to and a five thousand dollar cashier's check, which is sitting in safe that we have not cashed, um, from Civic Smart. There was a time before I arrived that we were paying a monthly fee to Civic Smart for the aerials, for, for the in ground sensors that we were not using. So yes, there was, there was money that we were literally throwing out the window because the, the accuracy was not such that we wanted to roll out the app that we were intending to do when we put in those in ground sensors. Mike and Travis, you asked about the monthly fee. Sorry it took me so long to get this in the packet. For phase one, for eight sensors is twenty five hundred dollars a month. When we get to this tab item number twenty one, um, for an additional twenty two sensors, it's a cost of four, forty eight hundred dollars a month. And then we're also gonna be asking for, um, the app. So what this will use, all this data will guide our visitors to places where there is parking available. That's two hundred seventy six, two hundred sixty seven dollars a month. Okay, for me, it's not about that. I just getting, getting back on the path. I think it's into, to her point, right? We, we've made, we've made money on it. We've lost some on the sensors, but we've it's, she has a little more gray hair than when she was, she's only twenty nine years old, for God's sake. It's, that's what it's.
It's, that's what it's, I think that's the frustration is what it's caused, that we've made money, it's. We're on a path, right?
It's just giving the. That we're saying, we, what we have was not a good reflection of what we wanted to say and, and our goal. Is to make it flawless, have, have the parker have the information and just, just simple. Pay for it and make that. Just make it easy.
And just a, another clarification, that is a little bit of a soft spot for me because I was on the original parking committee and uh, if people ask all the time, well, it's. But making money and, and it's never been the intent to make money, it's to change parking behavior, right, to drive, drive behavior. And so these sensors, it sounds like that's what the original goal was, it didn't work, but. The, the goal is for us to have information we can share so that we can drive. Parkers to the correct places, so we can manage the parking problem and that.
Yeah, and the integration with the app that is available as well, um, as we expand this system is gonna be really helpful to that end.
Sensors are also helped with enforcement, they'll ding Shannon when someone hasn't paid and they've told them to get parking space and they've been there for more than fifteen minutes, so it'll say, hey, go to the course.
Yeah. Which was the promise originally.
Yeah, right, right.
One last one, Shannon, was. You feel like this is like we, we would never go back to a hardwired system just because of the infrastructure is not there to support it? It's better just to stick with replacing batteries or how we, you know, seller thing?
I think um, in some, some of our lots, it definitely makes sense to have badge operated um, sensors, because we just don't have. The power in place, they also proved to be very reliable, haven't had any problems with any of them, um. I do have a um, wired sensor, where can you get the wired sensors, I will, right now, um, we're just doing the, the digital because it, it really is a better product. So that is kind of why I went with that. And the nice thing about the, this, this battery thing, battery operated sensor, I can take it off of the litter room. So that is one nice thing, the horseshoe lake lot. That's at the end of town and is not owned by the city of Leavenworth. When we're done and that lot gets sold by the owner, I'll take all of my equipment out of there and I will then put it in a different area.
Okay.
So everything, we're, all the investments we're making in these lots, we can. Take them when we have no more use for that lot and put them in other areas for.
So use that flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So now when people drive to town, they just look on their phone where they're parking?
If once I get that one, it's gonna take a, um, once I get it ready.
Okay, it's not there yet.
It's not there yet, it's not. Well, we have to get our sensors up to really be able to utilize it, I have sensors in three lots out of the city and with the, with the expansion, I'm looking at doing. All the way down, just, just the lots. But we do not have the structure available to put them on our, on the streets, yes.
Great, I already entertained a motion. Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign supplemental agreement number one for clever city systems. Court in the amount of twenty four thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second.
Seconded by Anne, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Pass it unanimously.
She has laps.
Thank you.
All right, another. Supplemental agreement number one with Pacific Security, Selvin. Shannon, come on back.
You can just stay up here the rest of the day.
Yeah.
Wanna join us?
Now, the, the city council was being asked to approve supplemental agreement number one to the parking enforcement contract with Pacific Security. This amendment will increase the not exceed amount of the agreement by fifteen thousand dollars. Um, or a total cost of sixty six thousand will change. Um, the original contract commenced on June first, twenty twenty four and is set to complete April thirtieth, twenty twenty five. During the formulation of the initial agreement, parking staff. Carefully evaluated the schedules and total hours required. To efficiently manage the, the enforcement of the city's uh, paid parking. Looking forward, the city has acquired additional parking facilities, including Bluewood Annex, Horseshoe Lot, and this is all to say that we are asking for. Um, a budget, uh, let's see, to ensure compliance. With the budget upon the contracts completion, we are asking for an additional.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign supplemental agreement number one with Pacific Security for parking enforcement in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Second. Seconded by Travis, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Pass it unanimously.
Make sure.
Oh, I'll leave that.
Travis, another. Um, Village of Lights Traffic Pedestrian Plan and Funding, Selvin.
And my apologies, mayor and council, I had no idea that I was presenting these things. Literally just now and I'm looking the first time.
Welcome back.
Feel some.
This is what happens when you get married.
There. That's what happens when you leave. Nothing to manage. Um, so I won't read the packet to you, this is uh, number nineteen on your, uh, in your agenda. Um. We are asking for a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, which is thirty five thousand over the hundred thousand budgeted. For. The Village of Lights Traffic Pedestrian Plan and Funding, uh, we did do a. A, uh, a bid. Um, I believe TBMM came in as the low bidder. Um. And they're the same people that have done our, our flagging for the last two Village of Lights, they also have done Autumn Week for the last three years.
Now, this is expanded.
No, this isn't for, this isn't just for TBMM, I told you, I'm looking at this for the first time. Leavenworth City Council moves to authorize the not exceed expenditure of a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars to provide traffic control and additional public safety officers for the two thousand twenty four Village of Lights Christmas Town event.
Second.
Oh, approved by Mike, seconded by Sharon. Way to go, Sharon. Any other questions that Selby can't answer?
We got a couple of questions for you.
Can you tell them to let us, let us go home? Commercial street, cause we can't get anywhere.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, so we don't have a good answer this, but.
Yeah.
Are we bumping this to, this is five Saturdays?
Yeah, that is true, that was asked by our, uh, emergency management partners, as the sheriffs, emergency management. Cascade Medical have all asked us to expand the traffic control operations to five weekends, so. Because we were taken by surprise, um, because the chambers done a great job of advertising, hey, the lights are on the Friday after Thanksgiving. We're, that has now become one of our most popular weekends.
Yeah.
So the request from our emergency partners was to expand, there is the, uh, gonna be the incident command center, no longer will there be an event coordinating center here at uh, council chambers. They've asked to move down to Fire Hall, um, was it Station Thirty One, I think is what they call it.
Right.
Uh, so that's where that will be all staged, that's where um, Wash Dot will be. Uh, who else participates? State Patrol, Shiloh County Sheriff, Shiloh County Emergency Management, um, DOT. Uh, as well, did I already say them first?
Public Works.
Um, Public Works.
Best in medical.
So they'll be staged down at um, at the Fire Hall and we'll be doing it for five weekends. The other big change is they've asked us to. Prohibit parking, um, to create an emergency management, uh, preferred route. Uh, there's a press release and map that went out today, there will be no parking on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, starting the Friday after Thanksgiving through the end of the year. Um, on Pine Street, Fur Street, Ski Hill Drive. Evan Street. I think I got them all.
Yeah.
By you.
Yeah.
And they're also prohibiting left turns off of.
And there, that's the one change, last year there was no left turn from Highway Two onto Chumstick. This year that will be allowed, um, and it will be controlled by signals by Wash Dot. What will take, is, is there will be a prohibition on left turn, left-hand turns from North Road. Onto Chumstick. So, and that will be signposted at Bishaston with an electronic message board that will say, no access to Leavenworth from.
Okay.
Okay.
So they're gonna try and keep everybody on the highway.
Everybody on the highway, so North Road can be the emergency access.
There's still gonna be people turning up Chumstick and trying to.
They'll go up to Eagle Creek turnaround.
Or into people's driveways.
They will.
Yeah.
Enforcement for parking, what's, I mean, there's gotta be a program for that, I mean, we're. Both sides of commercial.
Yeah.
Free parking in close.
And Shannon's gonna be relying on, on Pacific Security, a little bit help from uh, TBMM as well, who is our flagging partner. Uh. And we'll be, we'll be towing as much as we can.
So we are gonna actually tow?
We are. However, I can't call it a tow. She can't call it a tow. Only the sheriff can call it a tow on our streets, we can tow out of our parking lots, but we cannot.
So do we have support from Shiloh County Sheriff's Office, we're actually facilitating those services?
They're the ones who want this to happen, so I'm hoping so.
Well, yes, yes, and.
Maybe?
Yes.
Yes, and realizing. We're not gonna get much towing done because it's gonna take, to impound them, takes them a while to move that vehicle and then to come back and get another one, if there's many.
Oh, yeah.
Many uh, along there, there's no way we'll get them all.
We have, we have reached out to Washington State Patrol, um, that permits to uh, impound lots. To inquire about the feasibility of creating a temporary impound lot at Car Wash that we now own. We.
We've not gotten any information back, they're still trying to.
Yeah.
It's gonna look really bad optics, I mean dude, whoa, I'm just telling you, like the city toes and it's like, hey, we've got a special lot for towed cars, I don't know about that, personally. Right, for the council, I don't know.
They have to go somewhere.
So, I do like though, the red spray paint, the last winter, two winters ago, I would, you, you gotta hit that.
If there's snow. Yep, there's snow.
Hmm. It works.
I'm just saying, that, that helps, right?
Yeah, it does.
We wouldn't wanna tow cars, at the end of the day, we don't wanna tow cars, we want compliance, right? We want compliance first and then.
We don't wanna have to tow cars, but it also, I mean, there's no point in adopting all of these and, and saying no parking if we're not gonna do anything about it.
Right.
First question about enforcement, I, like you said, it's gonna take a long time.
We'll ticket, we'll tow.
Tickets fine.
I think it's not even more convincing, if you see a car being towed away. You might have things like about.
Let's just drive around with the car in the back.
These are the cars that were towed, that parked illegally, that's, everybody coming into town.
Sounds like a new business.
Who is watching our city council meetings?
We, we paint that sign that's all faded there.
Oh, that one.
Impound lot.
Impound lot.
I'm hoping for no violators, but we do have to have a gigantic enforcement system in place.
Yeah.
How much will the ticket be for turning left or off of the?
Asking for a friend? Thousand dollar fine.
In the street.
I must say, that's gonna be a real habit change, that they would turn left off of North Road.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's.
You think, I mean. Pay attention to that sign down at Bishaston Bridge, for sure.
This, this was, I wanna make clear, this was not staff, city of Leavenworth staff's plan. It was a plan formulated by our emergency management partners.
Right.
And if you come from plain, for example, you can come, you can come down Chumstick and not have to worry about left, right hand.
Right, no, it's just coming off of North Road because the word has gotten out and I blame Waze and, and.
Oh, yeah.
Google Maps.
Google, that was, nobody knew that, only, only we did, you tell Google.
Those, those GPS apps.
Yeah.
So they should know that, don't send them there.
Well, all it takes with the good thing about those apps is as soon as one person puts in the feedback that you can't turn left.
I get it, yeah.
It should feed into everybody else, tell them that you can't turn left there, so hopefully that'll be. Anyway, do you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion, approved by Mike, and seconded by Sharon.
Yeah.
Are we done talking? No, Shane.
No, I was all, all.
You were, you were jumping ahead, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Okay.
Alright.
Unanimously. Action item twenty. Operational agreement with Wasba.
All right, I guess this one is assigned to me as well. Uh, this is a twenty year. Uh, agreement with uh, Washington State Department of Transportation for our annual Village of Lights events, if we cancel it, maybe they'll get a refund, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um. So this is a twenty twenty four project cost is, is estimated to be thirty six thousand six hundred sixty five dollars, you're being asked to authorize the mayor to enter into a twenty year contract. With Wash Dot. If, with a not exceed amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Did we, was there a reason why we decided on a twenty, twenty year term instead of a ten year term or?
I have.
No.
No, I don't know.
I was told Wash Dot wants a twenty year.
Oh.
Why, why is that, I'm just curious?
Because they don't wanna have to do it. There are reasons. Over and over again.
Yeah. Seems like a fair deal.
Right.
The bigger the less you wanna deal with those.
Yeah.
We do that with our SALT contract as well, it's a large number, but it's for multiple years.
Yeah.
Do we have any offerings on this, like if things change, like we don't generate that?
Lock the highway. Um. Yes, Wash, Wash Dot only builds when the services are rendered, so it's not like we're locked into paying this. The service has to occur and then this just gives, it, it's like a PO to them.
Okay, yeah, I was hoping so.
Oh, yeah.
It's only, it's only when they have.
Right, so if the chamber said enough, enough is enough. We're not gonna light the trees anymore, we're not gonna invite people to Leavenworth for Christmas Town anymore, then we wouldn't have to pay Wash Dot facility.
Okay, that's fair. As long as, as long as you try, they can do that.
Oh, shit. I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the operation agreement with Wasba for. A twenty year term in an amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Should he tell, what? How does this get paid, is this a general fund?
Uh, nineteen, Village of Lights?
Twenty.
No, the operation.
Twenty, it's walking.
Lodging tax.
Lodging tax.
Yeah, it's definitely, I don't know if you noticed, but there's a few tourists involved. But.
Yeah.
Checking.
Yeah, both nineteen and twenty are lodging tax. Nineteen was uh, already funded, should be fine without an amendment. I'll be looking at twenty. Potentially no amendment will be necessary, this week budget, I think a hundred and seventy five thousand between. All three, Pacific Security, the traffic and the Wash Dot.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. Okay, next up is professional services agreement for the Village of Lights Traffic Control, and this is for the private ones.
Yeah, this is the one that I thought I was talking to when I was reading uh, number eighteen, not much, number, uh, number nineteen. Uh, so this was the bid that we put out for uh, flagging uh, traffic control services and TBMM won the, they were the lowest at fifty eight thousand nine hundred and seventy three dollars. Again, this is for five full weekends of Village of Lights uh, traffic control services. Um, and we would ask that you approve this um, amount and it does come from lodging tax.
Fifty amendment.
You. Leavenworth City Council moves to award and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement. For the twenty twenty four Village of Lights Traffic Control Services Project. Between the city and TBMM LLC in the amount of fifty eight thousand nine hundred and seventy three dollars.
Second.
Ooh. I think I got Travis in there, no?
Great.
Any other questions?
That was underwhelming.
All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously.
Great.
All right, now we're back to the other clever city. Professional services agreement.
Discussed a lot of this already, this is the. Phase two of this project, um, it's in tab twenty two of your packet. Um. And this is where we're expanding that pilot from, we had the original eight sensors for those three lots. We're expanding this to twenty two additional sensors to take care of. Uh, the new horseshoe plate lot, Bluewood Annex. We're doing enchantments in Furland and Glacier, yeah, every surface lot that we control will now be surveilled with these aerial sensors. That'll eventually get fed into an app that will tell people how many spaces are available in each. Um, I don't know, does this include the, the signs right now?
Hmm, I don't think so, since everything we're.
We backed the signs out, okay, cause I didn't think. As part of this, and another phase that you will see in the future will be. Five foot by four foot electronic signs that will direct people to which parking lots have capacity at either end of town. But that's gonna require coordinating with uh, Wash Dot or installing and selling these things in their right of way. What I'm thinking is one out by the roundabout and the other one out by Safeway. So that on weekends like Village of Lights, if people are coming to town from the east and they're getting the Safeway, that would be their last. Chance to stop and, and park so they could walk into town because all the lots are full. But that's not what this is yet, this is the app, this is the additional sensors, this is the monthly fees.
And everything tied together. So I've all, phase one and phase two are all together working.
Is this just, this is just pinging signals? There's no video surveillance. This is just a signal from.
It is what it is. This is a camera.
Yeah.
It sits over top of our parking lot, but it shows the spaces. It doesn't, it doesn't show real.
So it's my question. It'd be a nightmare for public information if somebody breaks into a car, they request this video camera.
There's no, okay, none of that. Okay, but one good thing is that when, because they will gather the data and they will map out cuz it, it works for themselves. Um, so it knows where the stalls are, and then when we have winter and it gets plowed and you can't see the stripes anymore.
Yeah.
This knows where the, this knows where the stalls. This knows where.
So it's a hundred percent accurate?
Hundred percent is, I don't think it's a hundred percent accurate, but it is very, very high.
It knows where the stalls are. The parkers don't.
So this phase two contract replaces our phase one contract.
Yes, I think, yes, everything is tied together.
Yeah.
When it's tied together, it'll all be, yep. One contract.
How many years was this?
It's a three year.
Three year contract.
The one thing that has been hammered out with the person sale agreement, and I haven't gotten this in my email yet, was I believe they wanted us to pay them by AHC. Um, and that's not how we typically pay vendors, so that needs to be worked out, but everything else, some of the PSA has been reviewed by our attorney.
So we're paying all this money for an app?
No, we're paying all this money.
We're buying a lot of sensors.
Yeah.
Oh, there's sensors, okay.
All of our sensors.
And that, so all, all the sensing that Clever City was supposed to do for us, this company will actually do for us.
Where they come in.
Thank you.
We knew what you meant.
Okay.
Civic smarts.
The other company, sorry, that starts with a C.
Yeah, I entertain emotions.
Leamore City Council moves to.
You know that thing where you ask, it's a public having comments that you don't do? Yeah, that I don't very often do, but this needs to get on the. Okay, okay, send it all, password. That's fine.
Leamore City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Clever City Systems Corporation for a three year term. In the amount of three hundred, three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty cents pending final review by the city attorney.
Second.
By Clint, second by Ann. And you've got a question or comment, Ron? Come on up.
My concern is. That we're now incurring monthly costs, but we don't have an app that this is doing anything for. We had sensors for a year that weren't implemented. And now we're bleeding if we don't have the app. So my concern would be to prioritize. Implementation quickly so that it's actually doing something for the city. This is like ninety, ninety thousand dollars a year. If we don't have the app and the signs up against, that's a lot of money.
I, I will state that it's not just for the app. It does help with our parking enforcement.
Alright, still lets our enforcers know when there's somebody that's gone in and hasn't paid and that sort of stuff. We still get information from it, even though it's not general public and thirty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, a lot.
Two point six million.
Budget was seventy thousand a year with the sensors that didn't work. And we were getting somewhere around fifty to sixty percent accuracy, I think it was. So.
How much money did, did we get back on the sensors that didn't work? Do you know off the top of your head?
We stopped paying.
Right.
Is what.
We didn't get them back. They're still on the ground. We haven't taken them out. We're never gonna shake them out.
Oh, okay.
They're gonna stay there.
They're gonna stay. You can, you can see them.
What we will do is surplus the parking meters and try to sell them to some unwitting. Thirty nine hours.
Timeline on. Time to be removed from the street.
I am hoping to have a contract to do this.
Awesome.
How much did we pay for the sensors that didn't work?
That was a multifaceted contract at about six hundred thousand dollars. It included the sensors, the meters, the installation, the training. It was a lot of pieces.
Over time, they did pay for themselves, though.
We're generating about two point five million dollars in parking revenue right now.
Yeah, I just was curious.
Yeah, they paid for themselves in the first year plus, so.
So to point to Daron's question, do we have a guarantee that this app will be functioning before we disperse these funds?
Well, I can write that into the PSA that we don't start. Turn, uh, don't start until the app's ready, or we can delay installation until the app's ready.
I think it's really, I think his point's really well taken. At least we know it's operational and it's, it's doing what we're paying this money for.
They're working on that app and that.
Yeah, they, they have an existing app, which we haven't deployed yet because it's under redevelopment.
Right, but I'm just saying. It needs to be functioning and. And effective then.
Yeah.
Before we pay these guys anything.
They'll get it functioning sooner if we don't pay them.
Does our proposal break out the, the fees for the app, um, service versus?
Yes, the, the app itself is, uh, thirty, two hundred dollars a year.
So it's a small, small.
Small.
Well, we can, we can say we're gonna pay you that until the actual.
Well, that we, they wouldn't pay until, absolutely, but we could also, I don't know how long we wanted to wait installing the sensors with winter coming, winter's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty Game of Thrones.
Yeah.
All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously, and that ends our production items.
Nothing else, we can become consultant.
Jared. I, um, was here for the picking out who was going to be the next council member. Other than that, I have gone nowhere. I've been taking care of my back.
Yeah, take care of your back.
Yes.
Good job.
Go ahead.
Still did less than.
You did the same amount of sharing.
I don't have any committee reports. Mike here on the.
Yeah, okay.
See.
Nothing to, uh, nope, nothing to report. I just wanna, um, maybe encourage, encourage folks.
Second half of the month.
If you can make it down to, um, they're taking testimony on the short term rentals at, uh, county commissioners down at, uh. Think you might be aware of that.
More on that.
Take a comment tomorrow night, uh, the Technology Center, if you need to know what that address is. Uh, cuz they're changing, they wanna change, um.
The density percentage, right?
Density, and they wanna change, uh, occupancy levels, um. So I think that if, uh, that's an issue for you, you should testify, either through Zoom or show up tomorrow at six thirty. If you needed information, I've got it.
I think you have to get on the list, though, don't you? And then they call, call people.
No, you just go to, you show up.
Well, if you show up, but they're doing it by Zoom too.
Yeah, but the last one I was at, there was, you had to get caller or whatever, get your name on the list, and they called people off the list.
Right, you sign in when you go in.
When you go in?
Yeah.
Can you sign in when you go?
Yeah, you'll sign in right away when you go.
I mean, I'm in.
And I, and I just, a comment on that is, to me, it's, it's as much about the process as about what they're trying to do. Um, this was a hard fought, long, engaged process, and now. They're trying to short circuit it for one commissioner who's leaving.
Yeah.
Um, that's not the right way to do it. Even if, even if they're valid things they're gonna change, they need to go through the same process they did when they set it.
Wants to get it done before she's done.
Well. That ain't the right way. It's gonna bite them if they do it.
None of you guys went to the community engagement night?
Oh, was it?
Yeah, I did.
I did that.
Remember, we missed the meeting, so we didn't have a staff report at the end of October.
That's in my report.
I attended the finance committee meeting on October seventeenth with Chantel, Selby and Zeke. And we reviewed the final draft of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, I attended the non-council meet, or gathering on October twenty-second due to the lack of a forum. Uh, I missed the community engagement night on the twenty-ninth because I was sick or just getting over sickness. But I did attend the council interviews and the joint planning commission meeting on October thirtieth. Uh, it was, it was a hard decision for me among the seven applicants, but I'm excited for Mike to be here and join us on the council. And it was, um, the joint planning commission meeting was, was very insightful for me to hear everyone's perspective on how. How we can move forward with inclusionary zoning. Um, I met with you, Bab, on November third, and we talked about, uh, the relationship between the group and. The PRSA slash city and what, um, what that means moving forward. And, um, there was interest in speaking with, with Selby, um. I don't think anyone reached out because he was on vacation and we didn't wanna bother him while he was getting married. But, uh, yeah, we, we just wanna, you know, kind of brainstorm ideas on how we can get a year round swimming in, in town. And then I watched Selby get married in Vegas on Facebook on November.
Song sung by Elvis is the guy right before you did.
Oh, he probably paid more.
It's a different package.
Yeah. I took screenshots and sent them to Selby and thanks to me, yeah. Yeah, that's in my report.
Uh, I missed Selby's wedding. I was invited. Can't be a Zoom and I tried, uh, with a group of people at the cigar bar. I got everybody excited about the city manager of Leamore getting married. We're gonna livestream it. I failed technology. I, the only thing I did was go with Andrea to the Winton, the Winton composting.
Oh, yeah.
What a great, what a great opportunity for them to take over. An infrastructure of an old mill that deployed up to three hundred people in the area until like eight years ago. I mean, it's, uh, they're building it. It was, it's, it was, they, I learned a lot. It was really cool to see. They need some help with the county. There's pushback. There's, there's a lot going on. It was sad. And I think we, we all know this, that the, like, the only glass recycler in Seattle went out of business. It's like.
Yeah.
This is, I mean, I'm like glass bottles that we do wall to wall. I mean, we're, it's second to Napa, you know, in Sonoma County, right? For what? Okay, maybe that's second, we're up in Washington.
Wine bottles in this town.
Lot of wine bottles. So that was, uh, this is hard, this is hard to. Listen, it's, composting is, is different than that, but it's, but it's bigger conversation of composting and what they do with. Um, the different farms and manure and, uh, the, all the different things that they do with composting. And so I'm gonna work to get on, uh, the county committee to kind of help facilitate that for them.
That's great.
Yeah, so. That's it.
Good, good job.
Thanks, Andrew, putting it together. It was really great.
You've never been to any committee?
I, I haven't been assigned to any committee. I know that, at that, it was beginning of the year and, uh, but I'm available. Uh, I've got the.
Well, he's gonna be on the finance committee for the rest of the year.
I'm, I'm hap, I'm happy to go to that. I, I wanna make sure I'm being useful if there's anywhere that has a void in the filling and, um, just.
There's just one more meeting left on the finance committee.
Yeah. November twenty, twenty-first.
Some ask question.
You alluded to it. I thought maybe I.
Yeah.
Include myself.
Yeah, that's where we have the gap, just for the rest of this year, and then we'll do reassignments in January.
And thank you for your confidence, you guys. I appreciate you, uh, including me.
Well, I've got one assignment for you. While we plan all the others, Solid Ways Council that we have a. A council member serve on that Rona had been serving on that with all of the other cities and county together. To deal with solid ways.
It only meets four times a year.
Yeah, they only, but they, they do have one that's upcoming, so that's why.
Yeah. I was on it. It's, it's an interesting group, who that is.
So. We'll get to that.
Solid Waste Council.
Is, um, is that happening before the end of the year or that?
Yeah, I'm looking for their meeting right now.
But what, you know, um. Yeah, I, I'm, don't have.
Sounds thrilling, I know.
Cuz I've been.
It's a necessary thing.
It is solid waste of society.
Part of the year is to let us know when the hazardous waste events are happening.
Yeah, that's.
It's a good part of me.
I thought it was really interesting. I, I got off it so Rona could get on a, a red window button.
So, um, yeah, I've just been doing my own caregiving of a wife who had a total knee replacement. And it needs to be buried around, so that's kind of what I've been doing in the short term. I did have, um, an exciting. Uh, request given to me was that, um. Governor-elect Ferguson has asked me to serve on his transition team. I will be helping him plot his housing strategies.
Wow, congratulations.
You beat the man.
I'm one of, I don't know how.
Can you throw out a caveat? Give us some fun.
Yeah.
He's already, he already heard from me is partly probably why.
Yeah.
That request came cuz. You know me, I talk to everybody about it.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Um, so that was, yeah, that was kind of an exciting. Uh, yeah, request to get.
Yes, for sure.
And that's it.
Cool.
So we got married?
Uh, yeah, I was in Vegas getting married with Elvis.
I love it so much.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell which one was you and which one was him.
Uh, no, we had a great time, but I really apologize for my lack of preparedness. Um, I got here, I had a ton of email, um. I went through the packet. I just had no idea that I was presenting that. So I would have been a little more prepared had I known that, and I just didn't. So I was, I apologize to all of you for my lack of preparedness.
It's okay.
I do want to, uh, give you a reminder that you have a retreat coming up on November twenty-third, starting at nine AM in this room. Uh, we met with Donna Butler, who will be, um. Uh, guiding you through a portion of that day. And then the other, the morning will be kicked off by our, uh, uh, ethics officer. Danielle Marchand, she'll be giving a presentation about our ethics group, uh, to bring people, you know, that as well as, uh, our monetary procedure. Um, and then Helena will go through, um, a real, probably four hours, four and a half hours of, of a quick Nash training with you guys.
How long is that retreat?
It is a Saturday. Um, we will have a continental breakfast, right? Um, and then for lunch.
So.
Andrea will send out a menu to Seth and you can pick what you want for lunch.
How long is that? From nine to what?
It's gonna go from nine to four, and then you can, we'll do a shuttle to the sleeping lady.
See, part of the.
And that's, that is, that is all I have today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dan, Ken?
I was also going for a week. Mine was surreal. It was my last four days with my father before the tax. And I would have been at Selby's wedding, but I was on a flight from Oregon to Washington. And he didn't buy me the package so I could watch it. No, I, I have never.
Yeah, I was out last week too. My son has, uh, tonsillectomy and I was taking care of him, so. Uh, I do have new employees starting next week. Um, the last Barry, uh, joining our team. We're really excited to have her. She's gonna stop by City Hall next week comes ahead.
Another steal from the county.
Yeah, yeah.
Do that, what's, what's your role, sir?
Throw one by the stick.
So we have, uh, we have three openings currently, um. City engineer, and we do have, uh, one interview set up for next week. Our wastewater supervisor, Antonio, desired to no longer be the supervisor, so he's been de- reclassified to senior operator. Uh, Austin, uh, resigned and he's gone to Wenatchee. And we have posted the backfill for the wastewater treatment plant supervisor position. And Brian Boblin's retired a couple of weeks ago, and we haven't had a decent number of applicants for the facilities. Uh, maintenance work.
Did Tom poach him?
Yeah.
Did he?
Did Austin go to the city of Wenatchee?
Yes.
Yeah.
He did go to the city.
I thought, I thought Tom wasn't allowed to poach any of our employees.
I. I've got nothing to say.
No, no comment.
We're gonna have executive session with our lawyer next week.
That's in like two, ten minutes.
Alright, do we need thirty?
Um, we, I, we don't have. Um, we, I, we don't have. Did, was the attorney joining us?
I don't believe so.
All right. Give me fifteen. Dave?
Okay, we have an executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Under R C W form two thirty one ten one B, property selection, cider acquisition, fifteen minutes.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank everyone.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
James.
Second.
All those in favor, let me see your hands unanimously.
To have an executive session.
Nine fifty. Stop recording. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Zeke, second by Sharon. All in favor, let me see your hands. And Mike wants to stay here because he didn't raise his hand.
I still, I think one of those papers was the signed.
There's the sign thing. There's a paper that's not a map.
Yeah, there's an order that's floating. It's right here.
I've got.
We got it.
I got it out. All right.[1781.11]